Item 1.02, Ms. Widener, if you'd take role call.
Mr. Dorr, Mrs. Evans-Brockett.
Here.
Dr. Koller.
Here.
Mrs. Mayers.
Miss White.
Here.
Thank you. Item 1.03, I invite everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America, and to your people, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.04 is public comments for the reorganization meeting. We'll accept public comments. At this time, there are three comments that we received via email that are attached to the minutes. I'm going to start with those that signed in that they wanted to make comment. When you come to the podium, I ask you to state your name and your municipality or your district building, and you have three minutes to make a comment. Dr. Russell, do you have the timer ready? So first up, I have Tammy Campley from Perkyomen Township.
Hi, good evening. I'm Tammy Campley from Perkyomen Township. I just wanted to speak this evening prior to moving into the reorganization phase and thank the current board members that are still here for their service over the past several years. And I also am looking to them for guidance as we move forward. As four of us embark upon this new journey with you, it is my hope that we can look to the five of you for guidance as we learn the process, the intricacies of what it means to run a school board. There's a lot of trainings and things that we will go through. And with that, I look to the five of you and I ask that somebody within the five of you steps up to take the lead role of being president, and then someone else steps up and takes the role of being vice president. I truly feel that it is a position that should be taken by someone who is experienced. It is not appropriate, nor is it responsible, to have a new board member take on that responsibility. We have mandated trainings to go through in order to become certified to be on the school board. I have been in education for over 20 years. I have my doctorate in educational leadership, and I am humble enough to say that I would not accept a nomination for president or vice president due to the fact that it would be irresponsible. Even if there have been people who have done it before in the past, it does not make it okay. New members should not be president or vice president. It should be one of the five of you. So I really hope that you consider that and that two of you step up and we can learn and learn to work together and you can guide us as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Tracy Tweedy from Collegeville Borough.
Hi, I'm Tracy Tweedy in Collegeville Borough. I have two children, Middle School East. I would like to echo Tammy's comments and ask that someone with experience be elected to the leadership positions tonight. I know that there are candidates who during their campaign made comments that made it clear that they don't have a fundamental understanding about how the board operates, how they work, the rules that the board is required to adhere to, and it would be a mistake to elect someone without a basic understanding of an organization to run said organization, especially when there are candidates with the experience who are ready, willing, and able to pick that up and continue the operations of the board without skipping a beat. I got a new job earlier this year, and we have a program at my company that allows us to learn not only about what the company does, but also what the company values and what the company's culture is. And it gives us an opportunity, when we join, to learn and listen and watch what's going on before we jump full steam into our jobs. And I would ask that tonight, you take the same consideration and allow the newly elected board members to watch and learn and listen for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll invite Miguel Cortez.
Hello, my name is Miguel Cortez. I'm resident of Perkyomen Township. I wanted to speak in this particular session because I feel it is very important and critical. You know, we're at a crossroads coming out of a very difficult time. Administrators, teachers, parents have been under a lot of stress just trying to adapt and make the best of the situations. We have now elected a new board that's being asked to continue to build this challenge and try and get us back to the way that we were, get us back to stability, get us back to have people in the positions that not only have the ability to do the job, but also have the passion and that their focus is centered on the students. Let's not kid ourselves that this campaign has not been led by your political affiliation. And while I appreciate diversity and different opinions, it is really important that we, as parents, administrators, leaders, and teachers, set an example, set an example for our community, for our students, that we are here to support and champion, for our teachers in particular, that this district, the school district, is a great place to work, that this district lives up to the reason we moved here 13 years ago after extensive research and going around driving in my car neighborhood and hearing about the great things leaving of the township. Hundred percent of the time, it was about living in a school district that is passionate about its students, that a school district where parents are passionate about getting involved and doing the right things and having a board and administration in place that is ready to lead to continue to make that happen. So I make a plea as we elect the new leaders that, you know, reason, civility, common sense, historical precedent, and what we know to be true leads the way in making the right decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Erin Maximilian from South. Okay. Okay. Cindy James from Perkyomen Township.
Hi, my name is Cindy James, and I'm a Perkyomen Township resident. I'm here to express my concerns regarding the reorganization of the board and the possibility of board leadership falling to someone who has no prior experience or leadership skills necessary to this task. I speak for myself, but also for others who could not be here tonight, either because they were unable or they felt unsafe to be here and speak openly. The task at hand is an enormous one. It is vital that the person charged with this task understand the intricate workings of the board, how policy shapes education goals, making long- and short-term decisions, and the consequences of such, and most importantly, protecting our students. When recent rhetoric has served to devalue members of our student body or student body in targeted communities, when these students' identity is not recognized, respected, or valued, then that goal is in jeopardy. This job is not about some warped sense of power. This job is not to be influenced by outside organizations to fulfill an agenda that does not serve our students. This job is not about dismantling student support systems or censoring school libraries of stories and histories that threaten one's false sense of narrative. This job is one of service. Prior board administrations have worked diligently to make our district what it is today, to create programs that seek to promote a more inclusive and embracing environment for our student body, to give them recognition and value. Continuity is vital for us to have a functioning board that serves our students in the manner they deserve. For these reasons, I implore the members to elect an existing board member to serve as president. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I invite Chad Bookter from Schwenksville.
My name is Chad Bookter. I'm from, actually, I'm not from Schwenksville, but I live in Schwenksville. How's everybody doing tonight? This is actually my first time coming to one of these in person. I've attended one through Zoom or might have attended a couple in Zoom, and I felt like I wouldn't do my son any justice by staying home, so I figured I'd come tonight. I've tried to communicate with a lot of you via email, and it's kind of laughable to me that people in your position don't necessarily have to have reasonable and logical conversations about decisions that you make. I mean, I kind of feel like pointing out a lot of the discrepancies that I've noticed both within this school district and, you know, on the planet or in our country in general, but I know that most of you have been watching just as I have. But just to point out one that is, you know, more recent, I don't want to travel back in time, but the school district had Harlem Wizards event a couple weeks ago, which was like the Harlem Globetrotters, but basketball, so I brought my son to it. And, you know, there's probably close to 1,000 people in attendance. You know, everybody had to wear masks except for the people playing, which we were okay with. I guess it was on a Friday night, so three days later, my son had his first fifth-grade basketball practice, which I chose to attend. But an hour before the practice, I was emailed and told that I couldn't go into the gymnasium with my son to watch his practice. So I attempted to reach out to Dr. Russell because I thought it was her that made the decision. She pointed me to Steven Boyd, who I guess is the president. I emailed him to ask, you know, what's the reasonable explanation for this? And he pretty much told me these were the rules and I had to follow them, and if not, I could get a refund, but he's not going to respond to any more of my emails. So the following weekend, the Youth Basketball League had a stripper tournament, which was run by the Youth Basketball League, and, you know, tournament through all the schools. And I walked into one of the schools, and as long as I was willing to pay $5, I could enter any of the games that I wanted to enter and watch. So the following week, my son had his first game, which was just this past Saturday, and I was told that I couldn't come in and watch his game. And again, I tried to get an explanation, and I was told, you know, they don't owe me one. So I'm standing outside Schwenksville Elementary, watching in a window my son play his game, and the guy, Mike Cleary, came over, told the janitor to close the curtain so that I couldn't watch in the window. My son is 10 years old. I'm a parent. I love him. I'm trying to support him, and this is what I'm being, you know, met with. So I'm here to express that. There's a lot more I could go into. I know that I only have three minutes, but the fact that you guys don't have to address these decisions that are being made is wrong. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite Leslie Connor from Skippak.
Hello, my name is Leslie Connor from Skippak Township. And like the first three speakers, I want to voice my support for the current administration in running the school board. Aside from navigating a difficult, to say the least, last year with changing protocols, they've shown tremendous community leadership with a program like PowerPacks, and they have experience in complex issues such as budgeting and leading one of the greatest school districts. And I would like to see this school district stay great, and it contributes to the value of all of our property and to the value that we cannot put a price on, which is the children, which are our future. And I would like to see somebody in that leadership role who demonstrates an ethical standpoint and shows judgment. I would not like to see someone in that role that has used divisive campaign slogans and has shown a lack of judgment. And frankly, I think that that does not support the values of this district. And certainly, as a resident of Skippak, I would like to see the current leadership continue in their roles. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll invite Beth Roberts from Lower Frederick.
My name is Beth Roberts. I'm from Lower Frederick Township, and this is the first time I'm sitting on this side. First order of business is that I would like to congratulate the new members of the board and wish them well in their future endeavors. The second thing that I would like to say is that it's important to understand that a school board never has been, nor ever will be, a monolith. There was not some secret cabal going on behind the scenes where everything was in lockstep and everybody agreed with each other. However, a good leader listens. A good leader devotes time and energy and effort into the job. A good leader will always, always, always put the good of the school ahead of any personal interest she may have. I was never the president. But I would encourage you, when you look at leadership, to look at the experience, especially now in such difficult times when there are a lot of big decisions to be made, somebody who has the stability, the calm, the experience, the intelligence, the excellence in leadership that we have been able to enjoy for the last little while under Mrs. Evans-Brockett. It's not an easy task. It's heartbreaking. And Mrs. Evans-Brockett and I have gone around and around several times on several different issues. And she has always listened to me, and she has always brought us together. So when you're making the decision regarding the officers, please take into consideration the people who are most fit, most experienced, and who have already displayed the leadership that is required of a school board president. Thank you much, and good luck.
Thank you. Next, I invite Jessica M. Coulter from Schwenksville.
Hi, my name is Jess Coulter. I have children in each level of the school district, and I'm an educator of over 20 years. I've been following this race closely, and I've been watching the school board for a while. I haven't been able to attend meetings because I am getting home late from my own teaching often. But I have some concerns about the leadership and about voting for someone who may not have the experience and education that is required, especially at a time when we're looking at the curriculum, especially the social studies curriculum, and we're hoping to diversify, and we're hoping to have a curriculum that leads to more inclusion. As the parent of three Hispanic children, I do not see them represented often in this curriculum, and I'd really hope to have a school board leader and a school board overall who seeks to include all of our children in its curriculum and in its teachings and make them feel comfortable and safe at school. I am not seeing that. I'm seeing a lot of divisiveness. I'm seeing people running under the slogan "for white men." I'm seeing a lot of... I'm seeing a lot of talk about critical race theory, which isn't taught in, at the secondary school or even at the grammar school level. And that concerns me because I think it scares our teachers and it scares our community away from talking about issues that are really relevant and really important to all of us. It also concerns me to see school board members talk about the possible banning of books or discussing leaving things out of the curriculum. As an English teacher, banning books really terrifies me. But I would really hope that as we look at the leadership tonight and as you think about who best to lead the school board, you think about somebody who really represents all of our students and not just some of the population. We're a diversifying school district, and I'd really like to see us represent that in our school board as well. Thank you.
Next, I'll invite Mark M. Nolan from Lower Zalford. I'm sorry, are you from, are you from in our district? Schwenksville. Okay, thank you.
If the parents in this school district wish to ensure that the health, safety, and well-being of your children is the number one priority of the Perkyomen Valley School Board, you will retain Sarah Evans-Brockett as president of the school board. If the parents of the children in this school district wish to ensure that your children receive a well-balanced, well-rounded, comprehensive, and fact-based education that prepares them for a future beyond the confines of these walls, you will retain Sarah Evans-Brockett as president of the school board. If the parents of children in this school district want your children to be educated in an environment that values and fosters inclusivity, tolerance, and justice, you will retain Sarah Evans-Brockett as president of the school board. If the parents of children in this school district want members of the school board to focus on important issues regarding the quality of the education of your children, including sports, music, theater, et cetera, versus divisive, hurtful distractions, you will retain Sarah Evans-Brockett as president of the school board. If the parents of children in this school district want your district to continue moving forward into the 21st century versus regressing back to the 1950s, you will retain Sarah Evans-Brockett as president of the school board. Thank you.
Next, I'll invite Kathy LaSage from Skibek.
Good evening. My name is Kathy LaSage. I'm a PVSD parent in Skibek with a junior here at the high school and an eighth grader in Middle School West. I would like to urge you to nominate and vote to retain Sarah Evans-Brockett as the school board president. I am very grateful for all the hard work that Mrs. Evans-Brockett has done for the district over the years. As just one example, the PV Power Packs food program that she started in 2015 has been invaluable, not only to the students who directly benefit from it, but for all of the families who help out in a sense of community spirit. I also thank Mrs. Evans-Brockett's background as a school social worker and her advocacy for mental health resources in the district are important qualifications for the board presidency. My family has personally used the Safe to Say program and the Student Assistance Program within the district's guidance counseling department. So I feel strongly that we need a board president who will continue to support and improve these emotional health services and others like them. The past few years have had a lot of challenges for our kids, our schools, and even the school board too. So I believe the district should continue to take advantage of Mrs. Evans-Brockett's valuable experience and her willingness to continue to make hard decisions as the board's president. Thank you.
Next, I invite Holly Lehman from Lower Frederick.
I'll just make this short. I am proud of our school board and all the hard decisions that they've made over this time. And whomever is going to be president of the school board, I would just remind them that all of your decisions that affect students, teachers, even taxpayers in the district must base everything on facts and data, no matter what it is, not even COVID-related. And so I just ask that whomever it is would continue the good work that we've been doing. And that's it.
I believe I got everyone that signed up ahead of time, but at this time, we'll open the podium if there's anyone else who'd like to make a comment.
Good evening. Robert Liggett, Perkyomen Township. Sorry, my sign up must have failed. Anyway, I'm going to be taking a little different tack than some other people have tonight. First of all, congratulations to the incoming members of the board. I hope you serve us, the community, well. I'm really shocked here. We got reorganization meeting. Normally, this is such a perfunctory operation, but not tonight. I'm going to do something else that I normally don't do, and that's kind of read a little bit more from my prepared statements because, as you all know, I tend to wander off in my thoughts. A president is going to be chosen tonight from among the membership of the board. This person's going to become the public face of the board and help to set the agenda. As the roles of the board are supposed to be nonpartisan, I would ask you to keep a few things in mind as you consider who to choose for your leadership. First, experience. Unlike some others, I don't see lack of experience as a disqualifier. But I do value it, and I think it is an important thing that you should look at. It is only one aspect of what you make a successful leader. Second of all, I want you, the board members, to look at, what do you think is going to be best for our district? I want my board members to judge matters on the face of the issues, and the only agenda that they should have is what's best for this district. You were elected to govern, not to represent. Popular or not, we need you to make the right choices. Despite the claims of some, this election was not a victory for a majority. For perspective, Mr. Keenan, who gained the most votes, received 49.2% of the number of votes. No one in this election gained a majority. You only gained a plurality of the votes. Mr. McGuire, who got the least, was at 45.8%. So you can see, the margin was not very big. And as a matter of fact, in the votes, 1,827 people cast a blank ballot. They decided that none of the candidates were qualified. That they decided to not check something off. So my message to you is, in 27 seconds, this district is a purple district. 42.5% are Republicans, 40.2 are Democrats, and 17 are others. So I would hope that we're going to find a leader that's able to reach across both sides of the aisle, regardless of how long they've been here. That's what's going to be important because we need to unify this district, not keep separating.
Firstly, I want to ask, where can I get that alarm for my alarm clock? Because that would wake anybody up. Good evening. My name is William Alexander, and I'm a resident of Perkyomen Township. I want to take this opportunity to congratulate the newly-elected members of our school board. You have been elected to probably the most thankless volunteer position possible. As the son of a board member, I can tell you that there were many nights where my own mom came home angry and frustrated, which was about 95% of the time. But there were some, a lot of bright spots in the six years that she served in the school board in our hometown. You have the unenviable position of having a great impact on thousands and thousands of children. Please always bear that in mind as you go forward as board members. You're going to have to make decisions that sometimes could go against your personal beliefs for the greater good of the district. Keep the politics on all sides out of decision and policymaking. The harsh rhetoric from both campaigns has ended. Let's see that end within these meetings as well. It is my sincere hope that we can move forward and pass this pandemic, no matter what side of things you believe. It is my sincere hope that we can once again talk about things that are truly important to public education, such as classroom size, fair funding. For me personally, arts education. Moving and moving public education forward so that Perky Valley can continue to be one of the top districts in Montgomery County, if not all of Pennsylvania. Please remember that despite the need and demand for transparency, there are going to be times where you cannot tell the public everything. We have to respect that as much as we may not like it. There are things to this day that my own mom still can't tell me. Like a lot of things. Sorry, sorry. I wish all of you the best of luck, and I thank you now for your volunteer service. And whenever your time is done, I will be here again at this podium, regardless if I agreed or disagreed with your decision-making to say thank you for your service. As far as the leadership position goes, I applaud anybody who wants to step up into the leadership role. It shows ambition, character, and leadership. That being said, I do ask that the leadership position at any time be somebody with the experience and training necessary that it requires. Please consider this going forward tonight and for the future. Finally, once again, I truly wish you all the best of luck as we hopefully will move forward towards a better future for all of our children and for Perkyomen Valley. Thank you very much.
Chris Rup, Skibek Township. I came up here tonight first to thank you. You guys are awesome. I appreciate the volunteer time that you put into this school district. For the board members who are no longer a part of the board, thank you for your time. The last two years have been miserable to watch online as you guys have bickered and had divisive fights in front of us as a public. What I'm also thankful for is Barb Russell. Barb Russell has been an amazing part of our school district for 19 years. So as I sit here as a parent of two students who've graduated and two students who are still in the district, I thank her for her steadfast leadership. I know that we can put anybody who is willing to dedicate the time to learn and to be a better advocate for all of our children into a position of power. We will do better for our students, right? We will do better for our community. This board is a wonderful group of people who, I hope, take this time to regroup as people and see that you have many commonalities. Because when I look at the charter of a school board in Pennsylvania, it is not to dictate to the administration. It is to sponsor and work with the administration on the policies that the state of Pennsylvania and our superintendents put forward to us. So I would like to see this school board nominate a president who is going to work with the administration in that area and follow the letter of what our school district is taught to do by the state and not necessarily follow every news clipping that comes out. There are good people who are about to be nominated, just who are about to be elected to the board. They shouldn't be judged because they haven't been in this role. They are hard workers. They politic. But matter of fact, most of them met 10,000 people who live in the district in the last six months and shook their hands and talked to them about what's important to them. They are probably as well-suited to lead as anyone at this point. So I hope as you look and you listen to the people who spoke tonight, you look at what our voters did in the district, you look at where you feel as people, how you've spent the last year and a half, that you can elect somebody who is going to bring change. Because what did one of the greatest leaders of recent times say? Change can be good. Change is a power for good, right? And I think I, as much as I appreciate what our current president has tried to do and the hours she's put in, I think sometimes change is good just to get a different lens in this district. Thank you for your time.
Are there any other public comments at this time? Okay, thank you. Item 1.05 is the purpose of the meeting. This is the board reorganization meeting. While the school year begins on the first day of July of each year, the Pennsylvania School Code provides that school directors shall also meet and organize annually during the first week of December. The code requires that a majority of the board be present to effectuate such organization. This meeting will be conducted as prescribed by the code to allow us to seat and reorganize our board. Item 1.06 is the election of a temporary president. Any member of the board can nominate a temporary president. This action does not require a motion and a second. A temporary president must be elected from the holdover members of the board. Current president declares the nominations, oh, sorry. I will declare them closed after we accept nominations. At this time, I'll accept nominations for temporary president. Dr. Kohler?
I'll nominate Ms. White for temporary president.
So this doesn't need a motion and a second, correct?
So are there any other nominations for a temporary president? If not, the nominations will be closed. And since there's only one nominee, motion to approve Ms. White as temporary president? Need the first and second?
Looking for a motion to approve Ms. White as temporary president?
I move to approve Ms. White.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Ms. White, you're temporary president, and you can take over the meeting, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans-Brockett. So at this time, I will call forward the board treasurer, Amy Hurd, to give the office for the reelected and newly-elected board members.
I do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Congratulations.
I'd like to congratulate our newly-elected and sworn-in board members. And if you could take your seats at the table.
I'd just like to know for the record that the board secretary has received the certifications of election for each of the new board members who were just sworn in?
I have, yes.
Thank you.
At this time?
At this time?
Is everyone ready? Ms. White, I think we're gonna proceed with the meeting at this point, and after the reorganization is over, we'll get all the new board members logged into Board Doc so that they're set for the work session.
Sounds good, perfect. So at this time, I'm going to facilitate accepting nominations for a new board president to serve for the term of one year. So I open the nominations now.
I nominate Sarah Evans-Brockett.
I nominate Jason Saylor.
I have two nominations. Do I have any seconds?
If there are no other nominations, the nominations can be closed and a roll call vote requested.
Are there any other nominations at this time? Seeing none, nominations for board president are now closed. The names of Jason Taylor and Sarah Evans-Brockett have been properly nominated, and at this time, board secretary will take a roll call vote.
Dr. Campley.
This is Sarah Evans-Brockett.
Mr. Dorr.
Mr. Saylor.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett.
Mr. Fountain.
Mr. Saylor.
Dr. Kohler.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett.
Mrs. Mayers.
Mr. Saylor.
Mr. Saylor.
Mr. Saylor.
Ms. White.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett.
Mr. Saylor has five votes.
Congratulations, Mr. Saylor.
Accept nominations for the board vice president to serve for the term of one year?
Kim Mayers.
Don Fa- excuse me, Mr. Fountain has nominated Kim Mayers to serve as board vice president for one year. Are there any other nominations for the position of vice president?
I nominate Rena Kohler.
Was that Dr. Campley? I'm sorry. Dr. Campley has nominated Dr. Kohler. Are there any other nominations for the position of board vice president? I'll call nominations closed and ask the secretary to do a roll call.
Dr. Campley.
Rena Kohler.
Mr. Dorr.
Mrs. Mayers.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett.
Dr. Kohler.
Mr. Fountain. I'm sorry.
Mrs. Mayers.
Mr. Keenan.
Mrs. Mayers.
Dr. Kohler.
Dr. Kohler.
Mrs. Mayers.
Mrs. Mayers.
Mr. Saylor.
Mrs. Mayers.
Ms. White.
Dr. Kohler.
Mrs. Mayers has five votes.
Looking for a motion to authorize signature change of the current electric signature until a new one is to be updated. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Dorr, is there a second? I have a second by Mr. Keenan, are there any discussions? There are no discussions, call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against say nay. Motion is approved.[978.12][978.12](applause) Remarks by newly elected members, we'll start with Dr. Campley.
No, it's you, it's you.
Oh, it's just me?
It's you. Just the officers.
Dorr, I'm sorry about that, we'll start with Mrs. Mayers.
No remarks. Thank you. I just look forward to continuing to work together as a group of nine, continuing to move the district forward and working to continue to unify and move all of us to a, really a place of healing and academic excellence.
Thank you. I first want to take the opportunity to congratulate Dr. Hallis and Ms. Evans-Brockett on their respective term as board president for the Perk Uman Valley School District during the 2021 board year. I'd also like to recognize Dr. Hallis, Ms. Roberts, Ms. Lofton, and Dr. Wesson for the time they have given to our community and our students these past few years as members of the Perk Uman Valley School Board. As with any members who serve in this position, the community is grateful for the time that you have given and the sacrifice you have taken away from your family to work for and support the greater good of the Perk Uman Valley School District. I want to congratulate Dr. Campley, Mr. Keenan, Mr. Fountain on their election to the board. I look forward to working with this group during the next four years together. I want to congratulate Mrs. Mayers for her election to vice president of our board. I very much look forward to your counsel and leadership in the year ahead. Unification is the act, the process, or the result of bringing or coming together, or as if into the single group, unification of a divided nation or a divided school district. Winning, excuse me, this is not a word or phrase that I say today, or there is not a word or phrase that I will say today that will change the minds and bring everyone together. Winning an election is just the first, and honestly, the easiest part of being a member to serve on the Perk Uman Valley School Board. The next steps will be difficult, but certainly much more meaningful, and I look forward to the challenge of serving our community. A few statements that are meaningful to our work together over these next few days, weeks, months, and years ahead are we need to lead by example. We cannot be in a position to end bullying by bullying others, but we can be in a position to create a culture of respect and tolerances of all differences. We cannot hold one group above others, but we will and can create a culture where there's an understanding that everyone is important and everyone is equal. We cannot advocate for pet projects to make ourselves feel good, but what we will and can do is advocate for projects that will affect and provide for everyone. We cannot keep only some politics out of our buildings, but we will and can keep all politics out of our buildings. Our goal must be to govern our school district, not to run the school district. Our goal must be to sell the aspect of public education over all aspects of education in our area. Public education of late has become a choice, and we want parents to choose Perk Uman Valley. We will do that by creating a culture of pride, where we are proud of everyone and everything that we stand for. Over the next three hundred and sixty-five days, we will debate in favor and in opposition of many items from policy to finance and everything in between. Civil debate is when two or more people sit down, have a discussion, and all parties make their points. All participants should feel as though their ideas are being seriously considered, even if they have opposing viewpoints. It allows them to dissect information, ask questions, and hear perspectives in which they may or may not have heard before. This kind of debate is an extremely crucial tool. We can use it to obtain knowledge, new ideas, and truth. It can be difficult to implement, especially when emotions and personal opinions get in the way. However, the cause will be worthy, and our students and district will benefit from it. We are not a board of five Republicans and four Democrats. We are a board of nine individual people who care immensely about the public education institution and Perk Uman Valley School District. Although I suspect the road ahead might be bumpy, I do know that the end result of our efforts will be ultimate success. Dr. Russell, I am excited for the opportunity to work collaboratively with you as you round out our board as a board of ten. Our community should be proud that you are our superintendent. At this time, we will adjourn for what could be a group picture, getting our computers set up, and then prepare for our first work session together. All right, all the board members ready? Yep. All right, I'm going to call this December 6th work session to order. Ask that Secretary to roll call.
Mr. Dorr.
Here.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett.
Here.
Dr. Campley.
Here.
Mr. Fountain.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Dr. Koller.
Here.
Mrs. Mayers.
Here.
Mr. Saylor.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? I have a motion by Mr. Dorr. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Dr. Campley. Any questions? Since there are none, all in favor say aye. Against nay. Agenda passes as presented. We'll next go to comments from the participants. And, excuse me, as I just get used to the system, we'll start with Dr. Weston.
Good evening, everyone. Wade Weston, Collegeville Borough. Thank you for this opportunity to comment. I'd like to make a comment on the proposed update to the Health and Safety Plan to eliminate the assurance testing program for unvaccinated faculty and staff. I believe it's premature to discontinue this program at this time. The rationale for discontinuing assurance testing seems to be based on two things. First, that it's considered unnecessary since we haven't seen any positive tests from any of our unvaccinated staff yet. And second, that it's being described as discriminatory against unvaccinated faculty and staff. First of all, with regard to not seeing any positive tests from our unvaccinated staff yet, I think that is fantastic. That's great news. I'm very happy that we aren't seeing any positive testing that. But unfortunately, the fact is, we are still in a high state of COVID transmission in Montco and in Perkeomen Valley. Incidence rates for the virus have been steadily increasing since August and right now are very similar to where they were last year at this time. This is no time to be letting our guard down. COVID is still out there. It is spreading, and we need to be vigilant to keep it out of the schools. What we are doing now is working to keep it out of the schools. We should continue to do what's working. As far as the testing being discriminatory, this, we've heard several comments in recent meetings about a study that seems to be the basis for this argument, a study that was published recently in the journal Lancet Infectious Diseases and reported in the news media by the Bloomberg Network. The conclusion of the article, as reported by Bloomberg, was that vaccinated people can spread the virus as well as unvaccinated people, and therefore, the vaccinated are being discriminated against by singling them out for testing. But the Bloomberg description doesn't go far enough in reporting the conclusions of the study. If you read the actual journal article, and it is a complicated read, you see that it's true that if you're vaccinated and have the virus, you can spread it just like someone who's not vaccinated and has the virus. But what the study doesn't go into is who is more likely to have the virus in order to be able to spread it. Someone who's vaccinated or someone who's not vaccinated? And there's plenty of studies to show that it's the unvaccinated who are more likely to carry the virus and more likely to be spreaders. So there's nothing discriminatory about focusing your testing efforts on the unvaccinated. They're more likely to have the virus. They're more likely to spread. They're, or they're, they are the ones that should be focused on to keep the virus out of the school. The journal article concludes by stating that the study results underline the importance of continued mitigation measures such as vaccination, social distancing, and masking. And my time is running out, so I'll conclude. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weston. Alicia Evans was, I'm not sure, do you want to speak now, or? Okay. Valerie Drury listed that she wasn't sure if they wanted to talk. We'll keep going. We had another, I'm not sure, Jackie Lichtenstein? Nope, okay. Betsy Stone? We got one.
Hi, my name is Betsy Stones, Get Back Township. It's going to seem a little odd compared to what everybody else is talking about, but for the past six years, I have come before this board multiple times regarding the dress code in our buildings. On the Friday before Thanksgiving, a random staff member, unidentified staff member, attempted to dress code my daughter, who was a junior here at the high school. The problem is, she was not outside of dress code. Everything she was wearing complied 100% with the current dress code as it stands in the handbook. What happened was that she was on her way into her first-period class. A staff member pulled her out of the class and told her to pull her dress up. When she explained to the staff member that she cleavage, sorry, my daughter is well-endowed, is not against the dress code, the staff member said to her, "It is for you." This is the problem with the dress code in this school system. Any random staff member with no knowledge of anything can humiliate and body shame any one of our students at any time, for any reason, simply because they just don't like what somebody's wearing. As long as we allow this to continue to happen, we will continue to have girls in our school district who cut, who feel bad about their bodies, who feel shame because of the body that they were, God gave them. It's not right. And we have a dress code policy that the board has. I would say that the policies that are written in our handbooks do not match that. Because for whatever intent behind the dress code in the student handbooks, that is not how it is being applied. When a staff member can say to somebody, "That doesn't apply to you," the dress code applies to everybody equally, or it should. And if we can't have a dress code that applies equally, then we need to drastically change it so that it does. Thank you.
Dr. Seibel? Yep. Miguel Cortez?
Hello again. Just like to continue where I left off in my earlier comments. As we now have the new board, I heard some comments that were made that at the face are very encouraging. I sincerely hope that this new board and this new leadership be a surprise, be an example to do the unexpected and right by the, you know, by the students. I really hope that, as much as we aspire that, we do take to heart, Mr. Saylor, what you said, that we leave political discourse out of the decisions that we make for our students. That you, as a board member, hold yourselves personally accountable to make decisions that are sincerely founded on the students' best interests, to build up this community and make this the place that I am, I'm proud to continually encourage people to move to the area and tell them about what amazing school district that we have. I will hold the board accountable for decisions that are based on experience, that are based on facts, and that demonstrate the ability to move the district forward for students in a positive way. I mentioned earlier, we are really at a crossroads here, and there's an amazing opportunity. We are a district that, you know, gets more attention than others. So I sincerely hope that, you know, we are able to set an example. I was apprehensive about bringing my son tonight. I didn't really know what to expect. I have been watching the board online, and this is also my first meeting. I have three kids in the school district, had one daughter that attended the high school who has moved on. I have a kid in Evergreen, and I have a kid in Middle School East. We are very much involved in their education, working with the administrators and the teachers. So, you know, we do offer a perspective. I'm also very happy to say that, you know, as a minority member in the community of Latino heritage, I have never once felt disrespected or be made to feel uncomfortable. I have, I have friends of various political opinions and backgrounds, and I have found this place to be a wonderful, diverse community, and that can be a strength. And I hope to see those decisions and that leadership also applicable here in the board. And I'm hoping to be surprised, and I'm hoping that I can comfortably say to my son, "Hey, let's go check out this board meeting and see how our leaders are setting example for you as students in our community." Thank you.
Erin Maximilian?
My name is Erin Maximilian, and I teach at South. I've been a loyal and productive employee in the district since 1998. I would like to keep my job as I truly care about the children. I would first like to congratulate our newest board members, Mr. Keenan, Mr. Saylor, Mr. Fountain, and Mrs. Campley. The voters have spoken, and you have rightfully won your seats on the board. For every one person who has spoken out against you tonight, there are two more that support you. I'm looking forward to the positive change that I know you will bring to this district. I encourage you to listen to the concerns of the community, and when it comes to personal health choices, please remember that anytime there is risk involved, there should always be choice, regardless of vaccination status. Keep in mind that one size does not fit all. A vaccination that may be beneficial for one may be detrimental for someone else, as is evident on the VAERS website. I am happy to see that the revised Health and Safety Plan includes removing the assurance testing requirement for unvaccinated staff members. This testing has been discriminatory, demeaning to our staff, very divisive at a time when the district is pushing for equity and inclusion, not confidential by any means, and it certainly has not helped to stop the spread of any virus. And now it looks as though staff members may have just been used as guinea pigs so that the test-to-stay program could be established. While I believe that it is great to provide students the opportunity to stay in school without having to quarantine, this program follows in the footsteps of the assurance testing in that it too is discriminatory against unvaccinated students. I understand that you are following the guidelines set forth by the Montgomery County Office of Public Health, but perhaps it is time to start questioning whether or not those guidelines are actually best for students. Keeping kids out of school for not wanting to swab their noses every other day is unacceptable, especially if they are asymptomatic. Kids need to be in school. Testing protocols should be the same for everyone regardless of vaccination status, as we all know full well that anyone can spread the virus, vaccinated or not. Just last week, an email went out to the community to remind them to monitor their own symptoms and to stay home if they do have symptoms. That should be the end of the story. At no other point in history have we had to test healthy individuals for a virus with a 99% survival rate. At no other point in history have we ever masked healthy individuals. We will never be done with this virus. There will always be a new variant, or rather, scariant. The sooner that we all learn to live with it without discriminating and causing division amongst our students and staff, the closer we'll be to actually coming together in unity. I look forward to the board's discussion tonight about making masks optional after the Supreme Court arguments are heard on Wednesday. Remember, anytime there is risk involved, there should always be choice. I pray that God gives you the eyes to see and ears to hear the truth. Thank you.
Cindy James? Cindy James? Brianna Hendricks?
Brianna Hendricks, Swanshale.
Brianna Hendricks, Swansville Elementary. I want to start with giving my congratulations to the newly-elected board members. You have taken on a very important role in our district, and as the previous board saw, may have some difficult decisions ahead of you. Tonight, I want to speak on the importance of choice in making individual decisions. The district is here to provide equality education to our students. It is not here to make health decisions for the students or staff. The decision to vaccinate is one for individuals or families to make with their healthcare providers. There are various religious, philosophical, and/or medical reasons that people may choose to not vaccinate, and they should not be punished for making a decision for what is best for them. The district is currently punishing staff members who choose not to vaccinate by making them attend assurance testing while their vaccinated counterparts do not have to participate. If they do not attend, their jobs are at risk, or they can take unpaid leave to come back and submit, or to lose their jobs. This is discrimination. The vaccinated can catch and spread COVID too. Stop making your unvaccinated staff violate themselves weekly. The district is also punishing unvaccinated staff by making them use their personal sick days if they get COVID. However, their vaccinated counterparts get extra days given to them to cover being out. This again is discrimination. Assurance testing is a nice thing for the district to offer their staff as long as it is completely voluntary. No one should be forced to test or lose their jobs. Getting tested should be an individual's choice. Testing to stay is another nice choice for the district to offer. However, everyone should be treated the same regardless of vaccination status, as the vaccinated are just as likely to get COVID. The shot only helps to lessen symptoms. Everyone should have to either test to stay or follow quarantine guidelines. Another choice should be wearing masks. If families or staff feel safer wearing a mask, then they should be able to. However, with the mandate ending soon, it is time to hand the choice back to the families and staff. If someone does not feel that masks help their health, they should be allowed to go without a mask. Stop making health decisions for students and staff. Please start letting families and staff decide what is best for their health. Thank you.
My name is Wendy Ledford, and I'm a secretary at Swansville Elementary. I would first like to mention that I've been a secretary with the district since 1996, and I would like to continue to do my job for this foreseeable future. I'm here this evening to speak for those who are too afraid to speak for themselves. There are many employees who are too afraid to speak at school board meetings for various reasons. Their concerns deserve to be heard. I understand their fear. I don't want to be here to speak this evening either. The fear of retribution is real. I long for the day where the school board's focus is on the education of the students at Perkman Valley and is no longer on forcing medical procedures on anyone. I'd like to share some of my beliefs with you this evening. I believe in God. I believe in heaven and hell. I believe that God so loved the world that He gave us His only Son, Jesus Christ, and that whoever believes in Him shall not perish but have everlasting life. I believe COVID is real. I believe many people died with COVID, but not necessarily from COVID. I believe the virus was made in a lab in China. I believe masks do more harm than good. I believe the shots do more harm than good. I believe in freedom of choice. I believe that Perkman Valley School District should focus on education and not medication. On November 16th, the school district promoted International Day for Tolerance, a day designed to generate awareness and strengthen tolerance by fostering mutual understanding and promote a time for learning about respecting the rights and beliefs of others. I do not believe my rights and beliefs are being respected. Vaccinated individuals can both get and spread COVID, but they are not required to submit to weekly assurance testing. Vaccinated individuals can both get and spread COVID, but they are rewarded with up to eight sick days if they contract the virus, while unvaccinated employees who contract COVID must use their sick days. We are being punished for following our religious, moral, or medical beliefs against the COVID I would like to share some personal experiences with family members and friends who have contracted COVID over the past two years. And I'll say this, it's not if you're going to get COVID, it's when. We all will. One, elderly woman, morbidly obese, diabetic, unvaccinated, fully recovered from COVID, no hospitalization required. Late 30s, male, morbidly obese with other health issues, vaccination status unknown to me, which it should be as its personal medical information. Hospitalized for over a week, came home on oxygen. Late 30s, female, morbidly obese, clearly my family has some health issues with food, kidney and other health issues, vaccination status also unknown to me, in ICU for over a week and still currently in the hospital. Late 20s, male, no health, no health issues, not vaccinated, recovered within a week, no hospitalization. Late 30s, male, fully vaccinated, recovered within two weeks, no hospitalization. I'm asking yet again to allow everyone the freedom of choice when it comes to masking and assurance testing, and for common sense to prevail, and to provide equal sick time to any employees who contract the virus. Thank you.
Matt Safroni.
Good evening. Matt Safroni, Collegeville Borough. I have a daughter at South and a son at East. I also want to congratulate the new board members. I was at the meeting last month, and several people commented in regards to the outgoing members, and rightfully so, that you didn't know what you were getting into with the pandemic and the many tough decisions that were needed by the previous board over the past 20 months. So for the new members, I'd say, you know, you did know what you were getting into. And because of that, your service to the community is even more appreciated. As for Mr. Saylor, I've worked very closely with him over the past two years at our local Little League, and I've seen firsthand his commitment to the kids in this district, his ability to bring people together, his aptitude and leadership skills, and I look forward to his term as president of our school board. I'm here again to just encourage you to vote in favor of the new Health and Safety Plan submitted by Mr. Felty. Removing masks from our winter athletes in both games and practices is the absolute right move at this point. I would encourage further discussion on why it's necessary for these same kids to then put on a mask while sitting on the bench after competing, as I think this merely falls under the category of cosmetic theater within the plan. I'm hopeful that this change gets approved, and now allows us to start the conversation about making masks optional within all school district buildings, starting in January, similar to what Springford just approved, and similar to what happens every day at Wegmans, Wawa, your local church, and any indoor establishment that teachers and students enter. Thanks for your time.
Keith Fry, Lower Frederick. I would like to welcome the new board members, and I hope that we are able to start making changes. Let our school district be the one that makes tough decisions and does not follow the narrative but does follow the science. I think it's time for this board administration to really start asking yourself questions about how this school is handling the virus, which by the way, has zero effect on children. In fact, not one person under the age of 25 has died from COVID in all of Montgomery County. We are not in a pandemic of the virus, but a pandemic of fear, fear driven by an evil force that is convincing you to do evil things. Remember, we all have a 99.97% chance of surviving this virus. I pray for this school to stop masking the children, stop the assurance testing program, and to not approve the test-to-stay program. These programs are designed to divide and separate, not unify. At this point in time, we've all seen the results and know that the shot is not effective in stopping the transmission of COVID, and that natural immunity is far more superior than any shot. Even the CDC reports that the shot will not stop the transmission of the virus. I repeat, the vaccine will not stop you from getting or spreading the virus. So why do we keep testing only the unvaccinated? If you are really concerned about the safety of the kids and teachers, wouldn't you want to test everyone? Why doesn't the school put in place a program that does a random sample? Each week, you could test maybe 10, 15% of the students and teachers. This would be a way more effective approach of keeping an eye on the virus. Now about the masks. They're ridiculous, period. They are more harmful than they are protective, especially when we're talking about children. Children have no idea how to properly wear a mask. For every study you show me that a mask works, I can show you a study that they don't. In fact, they're even worse for the health and well-being of children. They collect and hold the virus and make it much easier to spread. Just look at some of the results in other states. Florida has no mask mandates, never did, never shut down their schools, but currently have the lowest transmission rate in the U.S. I urge you parents to be cautious before giving your children the shot, because data shows that they are at a greater risk of harm from the shot than they are from this virus. Myocarditis is a real thing, and it is happening. The CDC reports, and I quote, "Since April 2001, increased cases of myocarditis and pericarditis have been reported after mRNA and COVID-19 vaccinations, particularly in adolescents and young adults." Our children don't need this shot, and they don't need to wear the masks. In closing, I would like to applaud all of you for the courage to get in your car and drive here tonight, because statistically, you had a greater chance of dying in an auto accident than our children do from this virus.
The rest of the list had a bunch of people who checked "I'm not sure," so I don't want to go through each individual name. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment? Just make sure when you introduce yourselves, you say where you're from. Thank you.
My name is Dawn D. Fury from Trapboro. Congratulations to the newly-elected school board members. Congratulations to Jason and Kim. I wanted to come tonight and talk a little bit about some extracurricular activities at PV. I'm very lucky, I have one daughter who's an athlete, and I have another daughter who's a musician and performer, the best of both worlds. I wanted to talk a little bit about the upcoming winter concert this month. It's been brought to my attention that masks will be required for the chorus to sing and the orchestra and band to play. Last year, the music department had a concert at Anderson Farm Park. All of the children were masked outside for their group performance, and unfortunately, we could not hear them. We could not see their faces, it was extremely disheartening. The music department children have missed out on a lot this past year. They didn't have a musical last year, it was virtual. They had to perform behind their screen of their computers. So as a parent, it was heartbreaking for me, taking my one daughter to play a sport outside with her friends, and my other daughter was dressed up in her musical costume, theater makeup on, performing by herself in her room behind her screen for a virtual musical, one of the saddest things I've witnessed as a parent. The musical department didn't have a musical banquet last year. This year has been much better for them. They had a wonderful cabaret, they also had a senior night, they acknowledged all of the seniors, it was beautifully put together. It's been a rough year for these kids regardless of what extracurricular activities they're involved in. As a parent right now, my issue is that I'm looking forward to one of my daughter's final concerts coming here at PV for her senior year. Once again, they're required to sing, wearing masks, and I think it's extremely unfair. I think we should be able to find a way for their masks to be off when they're singing for a few minutes, or even make them optional. So the chorus is going to sing with their masks on. My daughter's also in orchestra, they will have to be socially distanced with their masks on as well. It doesn't make, it doesn't take much to realize that it's hard to breathe while singing with a mask on, so I asked the school board to think about these questions. Why is it okay for wrestlers to compete without masks on? Why is it okay for the basketball team to play games without masks on? But for some reason, our children have to wear masks while they're singing a couple songs or playing an instrument while they're socially distanced. It is impossible for me to make any sense of the hypocrisy. I'd really like for the musicians in our district to have the same rights and freedoms as our athletes, like my other daughter. How do you think the children feel in the musical department when they see the wrestlers and the basketball players not being made to wear masks, but the kids involved in music have no choice? I really think we need to reevaluate things and put ourselves in these children's shoes and not just the ones who are athletes. All kids deserve the choice as to what makes them the most comfortable, whether that be wearing a mask to perform or not wearing a mask to perform. Let's be fair to all children and not make rules that are inconsistent across the board. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? Yes. Just real quick, the mic's a little bouncy, so I'm sure if you just step, stand a little bit further back, we'll still hear you, but you won't get that pop.
Hi, I'm Kelly Sirianni, and I'm from Collegeville Borough. My son goes to South in first grade. I just wanted to say that we've had a bunch of teachers say that they have the best interests of all children in mind when they come to school, which is the way it should be. However, I feel as a teacher, you can truly not have the best interests of all of the children in mind despite their issues. We have a lot of children that have autoimmune problems, that have sickness, and I think that if, that, taking that into account, that if a teacher does not want to do assurance testing or wear a mask, that's very alarming to me. I have a son who has chronic pneumonia, asthma. He's been hospitalized several times. He thrives in school, he loves school, it's his first year at South. However, I don't think I would feel comfortable, I know I wouldn't feel comfortable having him at a school where unvaccinated teachers are teaching him maskless. I would have to pull him, and I don't think, excuse me?
Just like to remind everyone, just like to remind everyone that we'll keep decorum at all times.
And that's funny. Is that funny to you, that my kid gets sick all the time? I've had my hus, I've had my child, I've had the paramedics have to come to my house, he hasn't been able to breathe, as well as my five-year-old, and as well as myself. I just want to say that every child has a fundamental right to go to school, and he should be able to be at school and be safe. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? Special presentation planning, it looks like there's administrative presentation, correct?
There is. Good evening, everyone. This is our annual special presentation where we present the program planning recommended changes for the upcoming school year of the 22-23 school year. This evening, we will discuss course requests and revisions, Act 158, graduation pathways, some requests from North Montco, as well as class rank, and all of the changes associated with these that would go into the program plan for the 22-23 school year. I would also just like to note that Mrs. Baker is here representing the high school administration, should you have any questions that she or I could answer for you. This slide simply depicts, this is an annual process that we go through each year that starts really with looking at our current program guides, working with our departments, and having them review the existing courses, if there should be any requested or recommended changes to the courses that we currently offer, as well as considering any new courses that may align with the district's mission and vision, and that may fill a need within the district. If we have any new course recommendations, we prepare for you a course description, the length, and so forth to be able to make a recommendation to you this evening. These recommendations for new courses, should you approve them, mean that you are approving the creation of the course. We would still have to create the curriculum and select the resources which would be brought to the board at another time for approval. We do seek input, again, from our staff, from our administration, and our education committee, most recently this past week, looked at the recommendations that are bringing forth to you this month. Our timeline will present to you this evening. Should you feel inclined and have sufficient information, you could approve those next week for us, or provide us with some feedback, and if you would need additional time, we could certainly push that to January if necessary. So before I get into just some of the actual recommendations for next year's program plan, I just wanted to remind us of some of the goals of the district in our mission statement to work towards inclusive communities, is to diversify some of our course offerings and our resources, and ensure representation of multiple perspectives. And you'll see a list here on the screen, I'm not going to go through all of them, but I will just highlight a couple of things. We do have a rubric that we utilize to select resources that- We do have a rubric that we utilize to select resources that has been updated in the past couple of years to ensure that looking at the diversity and inclusion is part of the criteria of resource selection. We've also been doing diversity audits of our classroom libraries to ensure that there are representation from different cultures, different backgrounds, and so forth. We have started that with some of our piloting teachers in the elementary program and continue that work as we move forward and into our secondary schools. You'll see the words there, "Providing mirrors and windows." Sometimes we use some of our educational jargon, and I just want to explain those. Mirrors are when a student sees a reflection of themselves in the text or in the resource that they are reading and helps them to feel a sense of belonging, that they are represented. A window is an opportunity for a student to see into the culture, the background, the experiences of others that are not necessarily similar to them, and again, allows them to broaden their experiences and understand what some of their classmates may be bringing to the classroom. We have been doing curriculum reviews in ELA and social studies, and most recently, about a year ago, the school board approved the increase in our health and wellness course at our elementary, that K-5 health and wellness. And we have here the incorporation of cultural proficiency. Really what that means is we expanded the class and included much more social emotional content and competencies, as well as one of the goals of having our students really be able to look at those multiple perspectives and look at the diversity that other students bring, and really how do they show empathy towards that in a very age-appropriate way through the K-5 health and wellness course. And then this evening, you'll notice here on the bottom, we have been thinking about some new courses at our high school. Two of them in particular have been ideas. This evening, we are prepared to present one of them to you, the Black History course. Before I get into that, though, I wanted to show you, these are the courses currently offered in our social studies department at the high school. There's certainly an array of them, and they vary in different levels, from academic and prep to honors and the AP courses. We are proposing this year for you, a new course called Black History. There would be no prerequisites for this course, and a student could basically opt to take this course. It is not a required course. It would be available to students in grades 10 through 12 and satisfy one credit towards their social studies credit requirement, which is four credits. You can see here some of the goals as we were creating this, and I do want to give credit to Mrs. Michelle Fokes, our humanities curriculum supervisor, and Mr. Ben Geis, one of the teachers at the high school, along with the social studies department, have really been working on this particular course to, again, diversify some of our offerings at the high school, provide an inclusive course with a variety of resources that would reach students at all levels. We are not suggesting any level such as an honors or prep level with this. It would be open to all students and striking that balance between the struggles and successes within Black History. And again, it is an optional course. It could fulfill one of those graduation requirements should a student choose to take this course. The course description is here on the screen. I certainly won't read all of it for you, but I'll call attention to those areas that are in bold. It centers on the experiences, voices, and accomplishments of people of African descent, balancing stories of struggles with stories of success, understanding the role race has contributed to the development of the American culture, history, and political systems. And it really is designed to be accessible, inquiry-based, and filled with choice, so we are hoping to really have opportunities for students to express what is it that they want to learn in terms of Black History and how would they like to engage with that particular We are certainly, should you approve this course, again, we will write a full curriculum guide for you indicating the learning targets, but we are investigating multiple resources that would support that curriculum. As with any new course, we would need materials and resources for the teacher and the students. We would look for core curriculum materials, library novels that, again, students could select to read, possibly videos, guest speakers, field trips, if they're appropriate. And as with any new course or initial adoption or curriculum review, the funds to support those resources are typically covered in our Ready to Learn grant. So typically in May or June, we would bring back to you the curriculum guide and any suggested resources with their financial implications for your approval at that particular time. That is the only new course that we are recommending at this point, and we don't have any changes to our existing courses either. But an area of our program plan that will need some revision is the graduation pathways. So many years ago, when the Keystone Exam was instituted in Pennsylvania, there was the idea that students would have to demonstrate proficiency on that end-of-course assessment, kind of like a final exam, in order to graduate. And that date of when students would be held to that requirement has been pushed back several times. Currently, beginning with the class of 2023, which are our current juniors, they will be required to demonstrate proficiency in the content areas of the Keystone end-of-course exams. That is Algebra I, Biology, and Literature. However, what the Pennsylvania Department of Education has done is they have created different pathways in which a student can meet that graduation requirement. The first two on the screen here are based upon the Keystone Exam and the scores a student receives on that exam. I'll show you on the next slide, there are some alternatives in case you are not able to demonstrate proficiency on that particular exam. But we would need to adjust some of the language in our current program plan, which is what you see on the bottom. I've done track changes for you, so you can see the red is changes that we are suggesting to add. The black is existing language in the program plan. So we would want to reference these new pathways, and Dr. Parr has assisted us in creating a visual to help our students and parents understand. These two pathways, students take the Keystone Exam. If they score proficient in each of the three, they have met their graduation requirements through Pathway 1. Pathway 2 allows them, let's say, at least one of their scores was basic. If they have the other scores on the other two assessments in the proficient or advanced area, you can composite or combine those scores, and you can see there is a cutoff. If the combined or composite score is above that cutoff, they can demonstrate their proficiency and graduate through Pathway 2. Again, these two are based upon taking the Keystone Exam. The state then included three additional pathways in which a student who may not be successful on that Keystone Exam could demonstrate proficiency. So they have to meet local grade-based requirements for Keystone content, which means, let's say, I scored basic on my algebra exam, but I passed the course with a C. That means I've met the grade-based requirement. Plus, I have to meet one of these three different areas. So there's a Career and Technical Education pathway, an Alternative Assessment pathway, or evidence-based, and each of them have a list of many different ways in which a student could demonstrate proficiency and meet the graduation requirement. Many of our students who attend North Monco take their, their CTEs or Career and Technical Education assessments. They pass those in their area of study at North Monco. That would be a piece of evidence that would meet the graduation requirement. The bottom left is, there's a plethora of other assessments that many of our students participate in, such as the PSAT or the SAT. Many of our students take AP exams, and again, you can see, dependent upon how they score on there, that may meet the graduation requirement. And then on the far right are more of those evidence-based. Many of them are aligned to career education and work standards or other ways that a student could fulfill a graduation requirement. So the state really opened up the opportunity so that students have multiple pathways, and we, as a district, are required to then track and record how a student is meeting their graduation requirement. Again, this goes into effect for the class of 2023. Some other changes that are being recommended. North Monco, every year, will share with us any changes to their course descriptions and program plan. This is one from them that is new for next school year, and there's a lot of words there that we would be adding, but in a nutshell, they are basically having the opportunity to enroll in honors-level courses for the different CTE programs for those students that are in 12th grade. So that's really a description from them in terms of how a student may enroll in the honors-level courses. They have also revised their description for the Construction Carpentry course, which you can see is just some different language to encourage students and help them understand what this area is, as well as a change to the approximate cost for students in terms of purchasing items for the program. And then the last piece of our program planning revisions is really as a result of School Board Policy 214, which is the policy on class rank. This was revised several years ago to remove the class rank from transcripts. And as a result of that, we needed to make a revision to the program plan. This is the first graduating class of 2022 that the policy changes that were implemented a few years ago are in effect for. And so we are suggesting a revision here to direct parents or students to Policy 214 and the admin regulations, which will have a form for a class rank should they want to request the class rank in case they want to include it on an application or they're applying for a scholarship, they can certainly request it. It is just no longer reported on the transcript. And those are the presentations you will find in your board agenda that there, under the education section, there is an item for this that we'll be seeking approval for at next week's meeting. However, you'll notice on there, there is a document link that gives you a summary of all of the things that I have just represented, what those changes look like in a Word document format for you. I'm happy to entertain any questions, Mr. Saylor.
Dr. Campley.
I was just curious. I think it's with the new course for Black History, I really do, I'm quite interested in it, and I think it's a great addition. I'm also very excited to hear that you're going to be looking at next, adding a Women's Studies course. I think that's another great opportunity. I am curious, and maybe there's already a course out there, and I'm just not aware of being that I don't have much experience at the high school level, but is there one for World War II and the Jewish Holocaust? Or has there been talk of, if not, adding one?
I don't think that we have one that specifically addresses just that. We certainly have European history, you know, maybe it would fall into those, one of these courses that may be covered. I would have to defer to the department chairs as to exactly what's covered in each of these courses, but something that we could explore, Dr. Campley.
No, thank you. I just think that would be another opportunity.
Absolutely.
I have a question. We're not going to, would we receive a potential curriculum for Black History prior to authorizing it, or no?
So the typical process is for the board to approve us to move forward with creating the course. So we invest the time in creating an actual curriculum document, which will give you the learning intentions, the learning targets, and the outcomes. That typically comes after the initial board approval to create the course. Then we put the work in, that comes back to you in May. We present it to Education Committee as well. So you have an opportunity to vet that curriculum before you would approve the course. The reason we ask for approval of the creation of the course now is because as we turn into 2223, our students will actually start requesting courses in January and February of 2022. So we need to include it in the program plan, see if students actually request the course to have a sufficient number to enroll. But if you should not approve the curriculum, then those students, we wouldn't have that course running in the future if the curriculum and resources aren't approved later this year.
I have a second direct question. So, you know, obviously, Black History is U.S. history, but it would be an adjunct to what's already taught in, in social studies classes, more, almost like an advanced nature, correct? So I wouldn't want to, for the individuals that take those classes, they're going to get a ton more knowledge, but we're not stopping the knowledge base that's already there in the current, current social studies? And then maybe even we can learn and tweak that current knowledge base that they get in social studies to include more?
Absolutely. There certainly will be small pieces that will overlap with the current, you know, U.S. courses that we have, but this really broadens it from the perspective of, you know, Black Americans and what are, what are their perspectives, not only their struggles, but really their successes as well. How have they contributed to society over time? So it's just a much more focused course.
I think, too, it's an opportunity for students to be able to take a course from our African-American, our Black students, to be able to have a course that they feel they can truly learn and incorporate that. You know, you're talking about mirrors and windows. I think it's an opportunity for some of our marginalized populations to be able to get a little bit more depth and breadth to their, to be able to really explore. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. White.
Thank you. I have a two-part question. The first is whether or not you have somebody in mind to teach this particular course, and if that is a person of color or a minority. I think that to speak to and lead by example that type of content and curriculum, it should come from someone that lives that existence, and I think that that is one of the challenges that we have at all levels in all of our buildings, and that's what we continue to hear from our families of color. So that's my first port, that's my first question. And the follow-up to that is, what type of input are you considering from stakeholders within this particular genre of curriculum development?
So the first question in terms of who would teach that, we do have a, we do not have a person of color or minority within the high school social studies department, a staff member at this time. We do have a very highly qualified staff member who has actually been working with Mrs. Fokes. I mentioned Mr. Geis, and he has a very much an interest in teaching this. But we have been working with the whole department and seeking input from all of them, so that, you know, dependent upon how our schedule is driven, we don't want to create courses that can only be taught by one person either. So there is interest, and other staff members have been giving input. As far as how we have been working with other stakeholders, so certainly through our Education Committee and through our department chairs, those are our internal stakeholders. We are very excited for Mr. Stephen Wills to be joining us in the near future, our new coordinator of Equity and Inclusion and Community Engagement, and bringing that different perspective to it, and we can certainly tap him. I know Mrs. Fokes has also been reaching out to her counterparts across the county. I believe it is maybe Lower Marion or Upper Marion, and a couple of other districts that have courses that are similar, to work with them and seek out what resources are they using, what guest speakers maybe are they, have they tapped into, or organizations that can help to benefit. So we do recognize that while we may not have someone of color to teach it, we feel we have a teacher that's highly qualified, as well as we are seeking out other options to bring in that different perspective and allow the voice for those windows and mirrors for our students.
So a follow-up question to that, I guess, would be, has it been discussed at any length that you were able to, you know, give feedback and report on with the administration in the high school and the counselors at the high school for how this course would be received by our students of color with being led by a non-person of color?
So I would have to ask Mrs. Fokes if that specific question has been asked, but I do know that she has met, Mr. Stansom Marsh, and she have met with the students of our Safe Collective, which does represent a very diverse group, and they have expressed interest in this course and given us feedback on that as well. I'm not sure of that particular question, if there were concerns from the student group about who may be teaching it or not. I can follow up with that for you, but we did seek our student input through the Safe Collective.
Mrs. White, you're not suggesting that we, it would be mandated that the person who taught this course would have to be African-American? Because then, would we then go to who teaches European Studies course at the school? Do they have to be from European ancestry? Or if, like Dr. Campley said, a few years from now, we add a course on the Shoah, that the person who taught that class would have to be of Jewish descent?
Mr. Saylor, I'm not suggesting anything towards you, and I don't appreciate you mocking my legitimate question to Mrs. Smith in the sense that I was somehow implying that only a person of color could teach this content. Clearly, you or I would be able to read the curriculum and probably be able to have intelligent conversations, putting our own personal baggage aside. I think that that is a completely legitimate question, and since you or I are not people of color, I don't think that that is right for me to assume that I'd be able to take that information and, and have to expect a role of authority to a room full of potentially people of color. But my question wasn't posed to you, it was posed to Mrs. Smith specifically around curriculum, which she is hired by the school district to develop, implement, and present. It is not the school board's job to micromanage curriculum development. It is the school board's job to ask questions on behalf of the entire community, and that question I posed for our minority families. Thank you for asking me to clarify. I appreciate that. I didn't have a prepared, like, speech or anything about it. I just wanted to ask that off the cuff, since this was already presented at Education Department Committee.
One question. It says that it would satisfy a social studies credit requirement, graduation requirement. Will it be taken the place of another, or is it going to be in addition to another?
Our students here, Perkham Valley, are required for credits for social studies, similar to when you were probably in the role, and so they all take the U.S. History 2, which is the typical course in ninth grade, and then they have the option to pick from any of these courses to meet their other three. So Black History would be added to this list, and it would be an option to choose it. So it's not replacing it, but they may choose it in place of something else on the list here.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to go into our student liaison report, which will be given by Mr. Christian Seibel, who's a current junior at Perkham Valley High School, and Mr. Matthew Schaefer, who is also a junior.
First and foremost, we would like to welcome the new members of the board. We're the representatives of the student body, for the student body. If you ever have any questions about the student point of view, please do not hesitate to reach out, because I would rather you bug our emails than never ask us any questions. At the end of the day, we're all in this room because of At the end of the day, we're all in this room because of students, not to pat ourselves on the back, but that's why we're here, so please take us into consideration often, and don't be shy to reach out, thank you.
All right, and just to start our report, we're back from fall break, and we hope everybody had a good time off, some, some well-deserved rest. Our students have been involved in many clubs, such as Speech and Debate, NHS, Robotics, Game Club, and Big Brothers Big Sisters, which is awesome to see. The musical has begun rehearsals, so stay tuned for the show later this year, occurring in March. And winter sports are started up, and we want to wish all of our winter athletes a great season. We look forward to seeing how you do.
We usually have a pretty light tone with this report, but we're going to talk about something pretty serious tonight. Christian and I have both, both observed, just walking the hallways, having friends, our students, well, our friends, your students, have silently really been struggling and just going through the motions of school just to get through 180 days. While our test scores, key stone scores, AP scores, our grades are phenomenal, oftentimes students do struggle with mental health and other things that are completely outside of their control, and they turn to other things to cope with that. We know people who have checked into rehab, they've given up on sports and clubs that they, they loved for their lives, or simply have just ignored their problems in an attempt to maintain their grades and just get, get through, get through grade 12. It is seriously time that we start addressing the problems of our students outside of the classroom.
We want to work with you guys, the school board, new members and veteran members, and the teachers to make Perkiuma Valley not just a great school academically, but a very healthy school mentally for our students, where they feel as they belong and that they live for more than just kind of getting the A. Sure, it's great for all our students to have 4.0s and great scores, but we gotta, we gotta look at the cost of some of this stuff. And the school needs to make sure that there are resources available for, for all students, and that the counseling center isn't just checking in with students who are struggling with their grade, or checking in to see why they aren't taking the SAT, but rather checking in with all their students, whether they're academically succeeding or not, and, and looking into any challenges that that student may be facing alone. We just need to make sure you guys are aware of that and are taking that into consideration when you're looking forward into the school year. Is there a question?
Mr. Dorr?
Do you guys have a consensus of what's causing a lot of this, or is it all across the board?
Yeah, so obviously, COVID is a big, a big thing. I think what COVID did, though, was more so bring things to the surface than create new issues, because it wasn't as if prior to 2019, there were no issues with mental health for anybody. But rather, I think a lot of students over the last year have kind of reflected a lot and found, found difficulties and challenges that they had, they had kind of been suppressing, and now that are kind of bubbling to the surface. And so I think we're seeing a lot of students, especially as SATs and ACTs and college applications and all that comes into full force this year, we're starting to see a lot of students really putting a lot of pressure on themselves academically and not allowing themselves that room to breathe, and not really having any support structures to, to encourage them to take that, to take that time for themselves. I don't know if Matt wants to add anything, but...
We got another question, I'll probably take it.
I appreciate you coming forth and bringing this very important issue through a student voice, because I really feel like hearing it from you, we know it's there, but then hearing it from students really kind of just pounds at home that there's a concern there. Have there been any talk that you've heard of, and maybe you haven't, or maybe you'll hear something later that you can share with us later, as far as what they feel would be helpful, kind of over and beyond just the normal check-ins by the school counselors? But is there any particular avenues that they're searching for that they think would be helpful, that maybe we could, as a board, talk about and with administrators to try and provide?
I don't think, I'm sure there is stuff that I'm just, we are just not aware of, but I've noticed, at least like personally, a lot of help always comes at a out-of-the-classroom level, but you're still in the school. So for instance, in a class that I had last week, for the first time in my career, a teacher said, "Write on a sticky note what you need help with." Not just like, you know, time management or procrastination, write what you truly need help with. And I think that that was one of the best ways to get me to reflect on myself, rather than going to a counselor, not that we don't have good counselors, but sometimes to take time out of your day just is not in a student's schedule, you know? So I think that, I know it might be in the work, I'm not sure, but instituting it into the classroom, giving the teachers the tools to, to reach, to reach their students on more than an academic level, I think that would do leaps and bounds, or just help our students tremendously and create a better, you know, sense of family and connection in the school district.
Yeah, it's one thing to just kind of say, "Check in with your students," and another to actually give them the means to do so in an impactful way.
I just want to say thank you to both of you for bringing this to light, because there is such a stigma around mental health, and the more you guys talk about it, the more good we can do. And I would encourage, if not the both of you, but maybe if you could get some students to start coming to the Wellness Committee, I think that'd be a really great place to start having more deeper conversations about these things. So committee meetings are where we do a lot of the hard work that we can't necessarily do in this forum, so if you could yourselves come or encourage other people, I think that'd be a really great place to continue this conversation.
Do you think that there are students that are just embarrassed to say that, you know, I would love like just 10 minutes to talk to a counselor just to just let go and open up?
I think absolutely that's the case.
Yeah, 100%. I would say 100%.
Because it happens during school, right?
I would say it's also, like Dr. Coler was saying, there is a stigma around mental health. I don't know where it comes from, I don't know, you know, how it was created, but there is such a stigma around mental health about suppressing stuff and just, you will be fine and you'll just get through. So trying to get out of your comfort zone and say, "Maybe I'm not fine, maybe I'm not okay," and scheduling that, that appointment, just sometimes students don't have the, the guts to take that step, because they're just worried about what, what may happen.
I also think you just need to understand, when you have, like, per se, you have a student that's, that's taken a rigorous academic schedule, and they're trying really hard to maintain those As, because I know several students like that, that are struggling, but they're, they put a lot of emphasis on their grade, they're not really going to want to take a, a class period to go talk to the counselor if that means that they're just going to have more work to make up later on top of homework and assignments they already have. So it does need to be understood that sometimes it's not, it's not that they wouldn't go there, per se, but rather that they don't really have the time to, to do so.
Yeah, they don't want to get de-stressed by creating more stress for them afterwards.
Exactly. All right, thanks for your questions.
Gosh, thank you very much.
Feel free to reach out to us.
Thank you.
Dr. Russell, Superintendent's Report?
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. So for this month's report, I would like to again keep us grounded in the shared values that exist in our comprehensive plan. These are the focus areas, and we just had some really significant and impactful comments from our student representatives that align to the support of schools in our efforts to help students to feel safe and supported while they experience their education here in Perkiuman Valley. We have work to do. At this point in the year, I want to showcase some of the things that are happening on the part of our students. We are rapidly approaching the halfway point in the school year, so I want to just share with you some of the, the learning experiences within our schools, the focus areas, and what they're looking like right now. And as I mentioned, I want to showcase a couple of things happening. So I'll begin with some, some of the showcasing that aligns to future readiness, and I'll start with the Viking Genius Bar. And Mr. Ganesh, our Chief Information Officer, had a great idea last year, presented it as part of program planning along with some of the other presentations, where our students signed up for a course called Viking Genius Bar, and they engage in real-life applications, projects-type learning. They are our PV Geek Squad, if you will. You're familiar with that at Best Buy. Our Geek Squad is referred to as the Genius Squad. They're geniuses, and they fix our Chromebooks for us. But the students shared some of their experiences from a very personal place at the most recent Education Committee meeting. What you see here is the look of their space, their workspace, where they, again, are hands-on and go-to individuals in our high school to fix devices. Mr. Ganesh is pictured with the Foundation's Director and a student as they were interviewed. There were some grant monies dedicated from the Foundation and some follow-up on their part. So some really impressive work, welcome work in our school district, and the sort of learning experience we want to grow and cultivate. To get our students to that point in the high school, we focus intently on early literacy and developing early literacy skills in our students. Here you see some kindergarten classes out at Shranksville, where students are actually beginning to read. They have both whole-group instruction, they have individualized instruction or small group, and they are reading. They are identifying sight words, as well as, in some cases, reading independently. And what we often see is when students come back after the winter holiday, and we approach that halfway point, they really turn a corner, and we're looking forward to that. We are focused this year on also closing some of those gaps that we're realizing. Some of our kindergarten students didn't experience preschool. We're focused on where they need some additional support, but they're well on their way, and some great things happening in these classrooms. If I move into second grade, there's a little bit more independence, the, the focus on early literacy continues in a reader's, writer's workshop sort of model. When you walk into the second-grade classroom, all students are engaged in lots of different ways, in small-group settings, in individual settings, in pairs, as you see there, while the teacher might lead a small group. And again, these students are not only readers, but now they're developing and strengthening their abilities to comprehend and learn from what they read. They are beginning that transition. Our goal as a district is to have students reading on or above grade level by third grade, and these are some of the activities that lead us to getting students to that point. So a major focus on literacy, it is the foundation for all other learning, and we're taking that very seriously this year, and really trying to stay attentive to the needs of our students, because they look different this year than in years past. Moving on, I wanted to showcase here at the high school, we have the Perk Up Cafe, so we have a team of students that delivers wonderfully flavored coffees or teas to individuals in the high school who are interested. They have a lot of fun doing it, and teachers and staff here at the high school really enjoy it. A really nice aspect to the high school experience, and this month they're highlighting some Peppermint Peak or Cinnamon Express, so they do a great job. And here's one that I also wanted to showcase. I learned recently about one of our seniors, Evan Romano, who played taps in Washington, DC during the Bells of Peace Ceremony at the World War I Monument, and this was on November 11th in celebration of Veterans Day. And I'd like to play Evan's piece, it's just a few seconds, so I'm going to ask everybody in the auditorium to stand while Evan plays taps. Thank you for that. Very proud of Evan, and that's a very moving opportunity for us to be a part of, and I thank him for his willingness to share that with us. And you can hear that they move on to some other players as well. Moving on in our presentation to supportive schools, so what are some of the things that are happening to engage our students and help them to feel supported in school and to want to be here in school? So I'll highlight a couple of activities. We've recently had the first-ever cabaret. This was a really neat event, they transformed the high school cafeteria into a cabaret-like atmosphere. You see our very own Christian Seibel over there, singing on the right. My pictures aren't the greatest, but the kids really did a fantastic job, singing some songs and entertaining the crowd that was there, and I think they're looking forward to this cabaret moving forward. Great job. Here's a couple of more pictures of some of our students. We also have some recognition for two students for their art, their artistic abilities. They were selected Tyler Waltrick and Sarah Vergoldi. Were both recognized by Cabrini University, excuse me, for their artwork, and they are now a part of a competition, and Tyler is one that is up for best show. So again, some areas that are a part of the educational experience for our students that really engage them in school. Congratulations to both Sarah and Tyler. And then we have our upcoming winter concerts. These are wonderful events each year, and again, really contribute to hopefully the positive spirit, the peace and the joy that we look for, particularly this year, as we wind down this calendar year. These are dates that you might want to note. All are truly wonderful experiences. The high school concert on the 16th incorporates all three ensembles, band, orchestra, and chorus, and it is one, it is an event to attend, I would highly recommend it. So we're looking forward to that this week and next. Partnerships, what else is happening? A silver lining that's come out of the pandemic for us is really how individuals have stepped up to help others. We had a holiday shop recently that supported over 100 children through allowing families to shop for items that might, they might want to give as gifts for Christmas, and this really targets our families in need. This is sponsored by Power Packs, and the Power Packs volunteers, they do a lot of work in providing food to our students, and they organize this holiday shop, and with contributions from individuals in our community, organize the purchasing of these gifts, they set them up, age-appropriate, by type, and families are welcome to come in and shop, and last week, there were quite a few families that came in and did the shopping, and this is led by Mrs. Evans-Brockett, and it really is a contribution to our community. We also have something different this year, offered by another individual in our community, PV alum Zenin Janiky, is also sponsoring a giving event and a holiday dinner drive, and on December 18th, will be set up in the high school parking lot, right here, around the bus circle, and is willing to distribute meals for families of six or fewer to serve them for the holidays. So again, just stepped up and offered this to our district as an alum, and just wanting to do something good for our community. So again, a wonderful partnership that we've discovered this year, and something I am very appreciative of. Wishing everybody a happy, healthy holiday season. I don't often have a report next week, as we move halfway through December already, so this week, I will extend my well wishes to the board, to the public, to the community, and you'll hear more from me in my weekly messages, but really hoping all of us are experiencing and will experience a nice holiday season. And that ends my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay. Slusser's Report, Mr. Schubers?
I have no report this evening.
Board members actively participate in a lot of committees, available minutes and notes on these committees, or activities are included in the agenda. Do any board members have anything of note to report on any of the following committees? Ms. Evans-Brockett?
Typically, the co-chairs report out on their committee meeting, so currently, I am the co-chair of Policy Committee, so there are numerous policies that are presented tonight for first reading, and Policy 816, the social media policy, we continue to work on and should be brought to the board for first reading shortly. During Policy Committee, we also had questions regarding the picking of, of books for the library, and that is Policy 109, and all the administrative regulations are there and the information on how that's happening, and that is also under review, and will come to a future Policy Committee meeting. In regards to Finance Committee, I won't go into that, because Mr. Weaver has two presentations for us tonight, so I'll let him cover that. And then just from PSBA and from Legislative, the Fair Funding Trial continues to go on, so make sure you're watching that.
Anyone else? Yeah, Mr. Dorr?
I'm still the co-chair of Safety Operations. We did a walkability, reviewed a walkability...
We did a walkability, reviewed a walkability study for the high school for east and it was, it was brought up that we should do it for all of our schools, both east, west, and probably not west, but Skipback and also Schwenksville. We talked about the new crosswalk putting in across the road from the high school to get to the river, the Yger monument and the costs, the Viking Genius Bar, how far out it was, the necessity of having a new John Deere with a Skid steer and some of the Lenape Arboretum grants. And lastly, we discussed turf rental revenues, which will be brought up, I think, at the next finance committee.
Anything else? All right, we'll move on to item three, the consent agenda. The following items will be added to the consent agenda for approval at the December 13th business meeting. The list is listed below. Do any board members want to, you asked me if they want to add anything else?
Move anything?
You want to remove anything for discussion now or leave it as is and move on for the consent for the meeting next week? All right, we'll move on. Education, Dr. Kolar?
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. Item 4.01 is the education update. So I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Smith.
All right, well, good evening again. We have just a few short topics for you this evening. The revised assessment schedule and update on our ESER funds. And then Dr. Russell will close with health and safety plan updates. So first is our assessment schedule. This was board approved, I believe, in, in October or November and we are bringing it back as we have made two revisions to that. First is the second bullet there, actually. We've included the COGAT assessments. This is an assessment of cognitive achievement and it is administered to students in grade three. It is typically administered to all students and it helps us to identify and screen students who may be potential students with gifted abilities. And that was just an oversight that was left off the first revision that we had board approved. And then in addition, we have actually reduced the number of Linkit benchmarks administered to the students in grades three to five. So if you look in three to five, you will notice that Linkit is listed in the month of January for ELA and math. And then it is listed in May just for math in grades four and five, which assists with our math placement. Previously, there was an additional Linkit math and ELA and the principals at the elementary level upon review felt that that was not necessary and this would provide us with sufficient information as we move towards that PSSA assessment in April. So that is on the board agenda for you this month for approval of those revisions. And then I wanted to provide you on an update on all of the ESER funds from the elementary and secondary school emergency relief. There has been several of them since the start of the pandemic. This slide just reviews ESER I and ESER II. You can see on the left, we received about 230,000 in the very first amount of monies that came out. And honestly, this was right when the pandemic started and majority of those funds were used for technology to assist us in our virtual learning environments. And those funds are expended at this point. ESER II then came along, about $885,000. And again, a significant portion was used on technology, the Chromebooks and interactive panels, as well as a bulk of that, we chose at that point that we knew we would want to do some additional summer programming at no cost to our families to help not only academically, whether that was to enrich or to remediate, but also just to provide opportunities for students to be able to interact with their peers again and really socially, emotionally join together. And we estimated, I think, around 340,000 and the bottom chart there tells you really how that broke out in terms of salary and benefits for our own staff. Transportation was provided for families. We had some third-party contracts with like Riverbend and Flux and Penn State University to provide some awesome opportunities for our kids and then our general supplies. And that supported our K-8, what we call our LIFT, Learning is Fun Together. High school credit recovery as well as community education this past summer was all free of charge for our families as well. And these funds in ESER II are also expended. And I should have noted that all of the allocations were board approved and went through the process of conversations with community members, education committee, and at different district committees as well before the board approved the allocations. And then we received the biggest amount that we have received so far, which is the ESER III ARP funds, which you'll see is about 1.8 million dollars. And we were required to have 20% of that dedicated towards learning loss. And we chose then as a district to categorize the remaining monies into three other areas, classroom resources, curriculum resources, and social emotional health and wellness. And I broke that out for you just a little bit. These funds are not all expended at this point. So I showed you what was budgeted, how we came up with those allocated numbers. For example, in social emotional, we have 664,000. What constituted that in each of them and what we've actually encumbered to this point. So there are quite a bit of funds remaining in the ESER III that we have plans for or are investigating what resources to bring forth to you for approval. You can see that there is a large chunk of that for learning loss, which would be this coming summer, 2022. We hope to mirror and reflect what we did this past summer and add even more opportunities for our students. And then you can see we have some additional funds for social emotional that are remaining there. And we're still working on those curricular resources, but you can see we've identified things for secondary reading interventions and reading inventories, which we just presented to our education committee on some ideas for that, as well as you can see some, you know, social emotional resources and flexible seating we continue to work on as well. So again, these were board approved by the board and we are working now to, you know, expend those funds based upon the allocations that were approved. Now we have another set of monies. These are called the Act 24 set-asides. They're still part of ARP ESER. It's about 140,000 that has been allocated to Perkeomen Valley. And they are broken into three areas, those tan colored lines. They identify specifically what the money has to go for. So I'll start at the bottom because that's the easiest. After-school programming, we received 1% or about 20,000 has to be dedicated towards after-school programs. Another 1% has to go towards summer enrichment. And then the 100,000 there at the top is identified for learning loss. And within that 100,000, there has to be 30% for what they are calling student social emotional mental health support, 8% towards reading support and improvement, and the remaining balance can be used towards anything that we can make a connection and justify is going to help us to support those students through learning loss. We have until September of 2024 to expend them. So this is a piece that has not been board approved yet and so we are seeking approval for this. When we received that 1.8 million dollars, we did a lot of work with our administrative team, sought input from community members at community nights that Dr. Russell facilitated, talked at different district committees, and we really had created a brainstormed list of items. And we were able to cover many of them through the ESER III funds. So when these funds came, we went back to that list to look at, well, what, what weren't we able to fund through any of the previous ESER monies? What maybe new things had come up? We did talk at education committee, we spoke at the wellness committee, and at the most recent finance committee to get additional input. So what you see on the screen here are the recommendations at this point that we would be seeking board approval for, but we're certainly still looking for input from the board and we can adjust these, you know, prior to the board approving what those allocations actually end up being. Again, the two on the bottom are pretty straightforward. These funds would really cover the staff, their salary benefits, and resources for after-school programming and for summer enrichment. The 100,000 at the top, the, I'm going to start at the bottom here of that category, learning loss, the 51,000 that is left, we are recommending we utilize to support what is called the foundations program. It is really for phonics and decoding in our primary grades. It's a program we already have in place. We've had it for probably about 15 years and has proven to be successful with our students. But we've realized over the years, we haven't kept up with making sure that all of our staff have all the materials that they need and student materials. We've done an audit of what we need and we know that we need to have additional materials to be able to implement the program with fidelity. So we'd like to use some of the funds towards that. And then the remaining funds, we'd like to identify for other reading and math resources, whether that's at the elementary, middle, or high school levels. When we do our January data presentation, we will identify for you the areas that we could utilize those funds to really target the needs. The reading support and improvement, that 8,000, we'd like to identify that towards secondary literacy. We did present at our education committee, two programs, one called Star Reading and one called Read 180, that this would make a slight dent in that along with the funds we allocated in ESER III to be able to move forward with those. They would, this would all come back to you, the actual items to purchase would come back to you for approval in the future, probably after that January data presentation. The 10,000 for professional development for staff, we would like to allocate towards trauma-informed and social emotional professional development. We'd need to investigate specifically what that is, but we'd like to focus on those two areas. And then the requirement for student social emotional and mental health, it's about 30,000. At this point in time, we are recommending one of the projects that's part of the Lenape Arboretum in Muhlenberg Woods, which is the middle school outdoor classrooms. This is the one that I think may have the most bit of conversation this evening. And I say that because there was support in both the wellness and the education committee for moving forward the outdoor classrooms. These are classrooms at both east and west where students could not only go outside and learn curriculum, whether that's in science or reading or whatever the content area, but also provide that eco-therapy setting, being outside in an outdoor setting, the opportunity to interact. So lots of cross-curricular connections as well as that opportunity to just be outside. We can have counselors utilize these spaces for mental health sessions and so forth. So we are recommending that, but I would like to point that there were some comments made at the most recent finance committee that I do think value, maybe some discussion this evening from the board in terms of is this the best use for these types of funds? And in addition, we are using federal funds to purchase that if the, you know, the district should want to use capital projects or some other funds, Mr. Weaver could certainly discuss that. So this is what we're recommending at this point for you to consider and hopefully have some conversation around. I think that ends my piece. So I don't know if, if Mr. Saylor, I'll defer to you if you'd like questions on these sections before we move to health and safety, or if you'd like us to just finish the whole presentation.
I'll leave it up to Dr. Kolar.
I would suggest we have questions about this now because I think health and safety is kind of a different discussion.
I have a question. I know you mentioned Star Reading and I know that Dr. Kolar and I, when we were at that meeting and also Ms. Mares, we also talked about Star Math that wasn't yet in, in the program. But would it, would we be able to do both at the same time next year or there's just not enough money for that?
I would have to investigate the costs of Star Math. I'm going to assume that it's relatively comparable to Star Reading, but we'd need to look into that. There is that larger allocation if I go back here to the ESER III. And if you look over on the far right, we do have math interventions, about 150,000 allocated and we've only expended about eight of that so far. So there definitely are funds available there and you see another 69,000 for ELA. So there may be the possibility that we could do both. We would need to do a little more investigation, but we could bring that back in the future as well.
And did they get back to you with the discount?
I have not heard back from the rep yet, but we will do that. Our intention at this point is to do the January data presentation and show you the data that is driving this recommendation and then possibly in February, bring forth the actual purchase of those two items that we discussed at education committee.
I just had a question about, you know, we're talking about allocating funds that are part of the social emotional mental health allotment. I just want to follow up. I know I've mentioned this before. Are we ensuring that we're including our school counselors and school psychologists in the conversation as far as curriculum and what can be utilized so that we are truly accessing it for what the money is intended for and that it's not just something that we say, oh, we could do it and then we don't actually see any counselors actually utilizing it?
I know that Dr. Klune, in his involvement with the staff and the steering committee for this particular project, has included some of those members on that committee to provide input, similar to the creation of a Black History course. And once the creation is there, then we'll go back to our curriculums and really look at how do we integrate that. Although I have had initial conversations with Mrs. Lofton, who is now assisting with leading the, the committee work that is moving there about how we can make some of those connections.
And just to make sure I'm on the same page, we're talking about, God bless you. God bless you. We're talking about at east and west, having the outdoor classroom as well as the... Correct, yes. So right, so basically all four, all four objects being built.
So this right now, the funds that are allocated here would be, this 29,000 would cover almost the full installation of an outdoor classroom at west and at east. This does not include the geodesic domes. We're looking at, I think we estimated what, another 160,000 on top of that for the geodesic domes. And there's a lot more legwork on our end that we need to do in terms of that actual installation. That would be something that Mr. Weaver, you know, and our group could talk about. How might we be able to fund something like that moving forward?
I, okay. Can I go? So I am the one from finance committee that brought up questions about the allocation of this money for the middle school outdoor classrooms. I think they are a great thing to have. I have a problem using ESER funds for it. These funds are supposed to be for pandemic-related issues. We just had two high school students come up here and talk about some serious mental health issues that are going on in our high school. And I think we need to investigate that more and see if any of this funding can be used for that. We also talked in finance committee about that we have time to use these funds. So I'm a little concerned about us rushing into decisions when we're still figuring out exactly the ramifications of the pandemic that our students are facing. And I think, you know, we need some time to figure out the long-term effects and what our students are going to need. I would like to look at some summer social emotional programming for our students. We're hearing from our high school students that during the school year is not the time to do it. They're, they're trying to get their academics done. I, I'd like to talk to the counselors about possibly, you know, would any of them be interested in working this summer and, and what kind of programs we could get going for that? So I'd like to have more conversation about this before we approve it.
Let me ask you this, Ms. Evans-Brockett, because I think Dr. Tampley talked about the same thing, like have we talked to the counselors? Before we build it, did we talk to the appropriate people? Are we able to just take that part out for now while there's still more conversation?
So the state does require us to submit an application through their e-grant system and to generally indicate what the allocations will be for. Doesn't mean that we have to specifically say like Star Reading, but we have to say ELA interventions. We don't have to identify exactly what it is. So we, you know, we, we have met the requirement to submit the allocation and the application by the deadline, which was November 29th. So we are in good standing for that. There's always a funding adjustment so that we can adjust what it is that we've chosen to spend it on. So we can certainly have more conversation. And I do think that based upon the differing opinions in some of the committee meetings, that may be worthwhile.
But just to clarify, Mrs. Evans, you weren't talking about Star Reading, you were talking about the, the outdoor facility, correct?
Right.
I'm talking about the funds in general. I think, I, we have done the paperwork in order to get the money. I'm feeling like we're rushing into decisions about how to spend it before we have the full effects of what our kids need. Like, let's, let's have the data presentation in January and then have further discussion after that. But I, you know, it's exciting to have all this money and to think of all the possibilities of how to spend it, but I think we need to remember what it's really for. And we are fortunate to have, to be in a financial position that we could do some of these other things with some other money that we have that might be freaking Mr. Weaver out, me saying that. But I want to make sure that the intention of these funds stays pure.
So along those lines, although I don't necessarily agree with the fact that the outdoor classrooms don't support pandemic-associated implementation of that money, I do have questions about some of the allocations on the other slide in certain areas. I had brought up one at the education meeting about, for example, the flexible seating as an example with a $200,000 price tag. Some of them are self-explanatory with how they are a, an initiative or a step forward to help accommodate some of the issues that we've had because of the pandemic. Some of them are not as specifically clear. So I was wondering if it would be possible to see this information with the thoughts associated around the allocations. For example, like motivational speakers that, you know, for social and emotional health and wellness, that seems like it is sort of self-explanatory. But again, going back to the flexible seating, I would say I don't really understand how that ties into a pandemic relief initiative. So those are just, just two quick examples. So I would, I would like to see how the thought process and the allocations of the different dollar figures were developed. But I do think in terms of allocating funds for an initiative that will benefit entire buildings, that the outdoor classrooms would be a helpful thing. And I think that they really go very far to allowing kids to have, you know, un, you know, as know, as terms of layering mitigation measures. I think that that is sort of a natural solution to a lot of the troubles we're having with community and communal activities in the buildings.
We can certainly, if the, if the board desires, I can provide you with some of the backup and the thoughts that went into this when we brought these recommendations to the board, you know, a couple of months ago. I could absolutely review that.
Yeah. So, and I also was looking for more information. I mean, at the education committee, we talked about the K through five have a lot of resources as they should, but as we go up the ladder, it becomes less and less. And I did hear in education, concerns from administration at the high school, just saying that they really don't have targeted resources and they really would like targeted resources. And looking at our data, I mean, math, you know, to my mind is, is missing. And I know we're looking at resources for ELA, but I just been wondering if we can also look at, at that. Is it possible? Maybe it's too much to implement, but I mean, that's, that's learning loss. So, thank you.
Absolutely, we can, we can certainly look at that. I think the January data presentation will drive out some of, some of that in terms of what some of those needs will look like, but we recognize math as an area of need. And you're right, we did present at education committee, the number of interventions dwindles as you move into the secondary round.
I like the idea of the outdoor classrooms. As far as the money, I'm sure we can find it, but the, the student body of east and west, where they polled or spoken to about, you know, the value you think it brings to them, and because I do see a parallel with kids working outside, helping their emotional wellbeing. But I just want to know that they have a voice in any of this.
I can say that I know through the summer enrichment programs that we held with, with Riverbend, particularly that were outside, we had a lot of student interest in those. I would have to defer to Dr. Klune. I am assuming that we've had some students, I know we have green team that presented at our, when we had the politicians here and the opportunity to advocate there. So I would be making that, I see him shaking his head. So yes, but we can certainly revisit that and see how might we also garner some additional student feedback.
So if there's no other questions, we'll move on to section, well, part three of the education update, the health and safety plan.
Thank you, Dr. Kolar, and I would like to once again emphasize the district's encouragement of symptom monitoring. It's been mentioned this evening as well, but we do want people to think about how they're feeling and to stay home when they're not feeling well and coming to school. There are three proposed revisions to the current health and safety plan. The first is to eliminate the assurance testing of our unvaccinated staff. We are not necessarily realizing the positives that we had originally anticipated with this work, investing a lot of resources. We have more and more individuals that are vaccinated, feeling stronger about the health of our community. We had two first-dosed children's clinics here in the district and moved 1,400 students through those clinics. Now, they may not have all been Perkiomen Valley children, but they were children from nearby. The second dose clinic offered last Monday included or involved 1,100 children for their second shot. So really remarkable, and I appreciate the Skipback Pharmacy in supporting. So as our community gets vaccinated, we certainly feel more protected, and the research is indicating to us that if individuals do contract as a vaccinated individual, they are much less likely to get seriously ill or need hospitalization. So we are requesting to eliminate the assurance testing as part of our health and safety plan and also consider not requiring masks when students, when our athletes are actively engaged in high-intensity exercise, aerobic as well as anaerobic. And this is an exception that is outlined in the order, section three. We are also advocating to incorporate the test to participate, which is a lot like the test to stay. What we've learned is a couple of our winter track venues for our athletes first required that they be vaccinated, and we are not right now asking students if they're vaccinated. We're certainly not requiring that. So what Lehigh University and our Sinus College opted to do was to instead ask our athletes to take a test within 72 hours of participating in the competition, and presuming that test is negative, they can participate. So they're not requiring that vaccination, but they are requiring a positive test result, and we have the ability to administer that through our test to stay or test to participate program. Again, that takes us back to that assurance testing that we have in place currently. So those are the three changes that are being proposed. Version 10 would become version 11, and we continue to take steps forward and consider the mitigation measures in place. And these are three steps forward as more and more in our community, and particularly those youngest learners that we were waiting for, have the opportunity to be vaccinated. So I am happy to take any questions that the board may have about those proposed revisions.
Dr. Russell, a parent got up, and I'm going to butcher her last name, I think it was Dawn DePiro, and she mentioned her children were in the chorus, in the band. I mean, it seems, you know, if we're striving for equity, the athletes, you know, they have to wear when they're competing, why are the, the singers adding to? So is there any way to bridge this a little further, test to stay for all performers and athletes?
That's an interesting suggestion. So that's an interesting angular way to approach that. Test the students, and then they could go without a mask, if I understand you correctly, Mr. Dorr. That's certainly something that we could consider. I will defer to Mr. Subers to be short.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, pending what happens this week with the Pennsylvania Supreme Court argument and regarding the masking order, at this point, there is an express exception in the masking order for the athletes. There is not the same exception for other activities. So depending on what happens this week, it's, it may be something within your discretion, but at this point, it is not.
Dr. Kolar.
I had a question, not about this slide, but the first one with the symptom monitoring. Just to clarify, I had some questions from parents about the second column, the two or more following symptoms, and why is a fever not enough of a symptom to require staying home? Like shouldn't, according to our handbook, you shouldn't be in school if you have a fever. So I feel like this is a little confusing. I wonder if there's a way to clarify that?
Well, I don't have a good answer for you. I know some of our nurses have opted to attend this evening, and I don't know if anybody is prepared to answer that this evening. If not, we'll certainly get that answer, and I, I can certainly appreciate the question as well. Our students have to be fever-free for 24 hours before coming to school. I think these are intended to represent those indicators of you may have COVID and want to consider a test, but I can see where it would generate questions on the part of individuals. So I'll talk to our team and follow up with the board to give you a little bit more background on that. And then if we need to communicate that out to our community, I'm happy to do that, too.
I think vomiting would go in there as well. And if you're vomiting, we don't need another symptom, that's enough to stay home.
Correct, especially that one, yeah.
So can I go, can I just go back, Mr. Subers, to your question? So currently, the state says only athletes can take their masks off.
It's indoors, indoors, for indoor activities.
Does it specify athlete or doing?
Sports, sports.
It specifies sports, not athletic or a, okay. But that could all change Wednesday.
Correct, depending on what the Supreme Court, PA Supreme Court decides to do.
Are there any, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Campley?
I'm just curious, with the elimination of the assurance testing, are there other opportunities that will still be available for staff to test if they do feel like they want to have that assurance again of being okay? I'm just a little nervous that as we're moving forward and we start talking about maybe come January, or, you know, depending on what happens with Omnicron and all, and what the state and local recommendations are, we start talking about mass choice at some point, and we aren't, like, then we've kind of removed everything. So how can we make sure that we're still taking those extra precautions?
So I appreciate you actually raising that point, Dr. Campley. We do continue and will continue to offer voluntary testing to individuals that are interested. So even now, there are individuals who are vaccinated who participate in testing, and we will continue, that is the intent. We will continue to offer that. So I appreciate you bringing that up actually and being able to emphasize that.
When, when is the next concert? Is it December 9th?
That's correct. So east and west are both performing on the ninth Thursday.
And if the mask mandate is thrown out, then they will not be required to wear their masks, or is there something we should vote on to make sure that the choir singing does not have to wear a mask if there's no mask mandate?
So right now, our plan requires masking when indoors, so they would not be relieved of that even if the order was declared null and void once and for all Thursday. My understanding is the board would need to take action on something new and different. So right now, our plan continues with required masking regardless of the order. So that won't influence the decision unless the board takes action to change the plan.
So we're entering the holiday season, and Thursday night, there may be no mask mandate requirement statewide, and our choir will be up there singing with their masks on. I move that they not be required to wear their masks during the performance if the mask mandate is no longer in effect from the, what would I say, the Pennsylvania State Department of Education? Well, if the Supreme Court overrules the governor's mandate, is that what it is?
It's actually the PA Acting Secretary of the Department of Health.
Department of Health's order, yeah.
So just for clarification as to what the current status of the law is, on November 10th, the Commonwealth Court held that the mask, Secretary of Health's order requiring mask was ill, void ab initio because the Commonwealth did not follow the correct regulatory review process in adopting that order. The Commonwealth appealed the next day, which triggered an automatic supersedeus, which would have stayed the Commonwealth Court's order and then, which means that the mask mandate remained in effect. On November 16th, pursuant to the plaintiff's petition, the Commonwealth Court ruled that the supersedeus was terminated, and then subsequent to that, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court reinstated the supersedeus pending argument scheduled, expedited argument scheduled for this Wednesday, December 8th. And all they said that it's, the supersedeus is reinstated until we've had time to consider the arguments. They didn't say when it would expire and whether or not it would expire on December 8th.
Right, their decision could be some time.
Yes, correct. So, and the other point I want to make about your stated intention to make a motion, the Sunshine Law was recently revised so that boards are required to give public notice of their agendas at least 24 hours in advance. If they, in order to take action on an item which is not on your agenda, you would have to have a majority vote to amend the agenda, and we'd also have to indicate a reason why we were amending the agenda. And then if that happened and we voted on that amended item, we'd have to post the amended agenda within, I think it's either one business day or 24 hours. So there's a lot of uncertainty, but if, I mean, if you wanted to make the motion, the first thing we would have to do is amend our agenda to include a motion to make mask optional effective, the termination of the supersedeus that's currently in effect.
Well, I'm, right now, I am focused on masks at the performance on Thursday night.
And, and that is a result of, and, and that's required per the mask order, and there's no exception there.
I'm going to try to dig into Mr. Keenan's head. I apologize if I say anything out of, out of the realm, but I'm just trying to quantify in, in the, in the perfect scenario, which you would be looking for. Supreme Court rules that the mask mandate is illegal. Your suggestion is then that the Perkiomen Valley School Board, for the time being, just allow the choir to remove their, for those who want to remove their mask, to remove their mask while they're singing, but then put their mask back on while they're not singing. Not talking about anything else about mask, mask optional choices in classrooms, or you're just specifically focused on that actual one singular event on December 9th or, and 12th?
At the present time, my other intentions to discuss masks have to do with complying with the agenda rules and bringing it to the board in advance for their consideration. I did not, I, I just found, I just learned tonight, unfortunately, maybe I should have been paying more attention, but I've learned so many things over the last year and a half that I never was paying attention to for other reasons. I, I never, didn't have kids before. And, anyway, but on the mask issue with the choir, I'm really moved by the parent who came and told me that her children are singing with masks on. I had a child or several children do performances last year on Zoom. I have one particularly artistic child, and I hope she becomes a good singer. And I could never imagine watching my child sing through a mask. It would be like watching my child play basketball behind a curtain. You know, it would be a similar situation, and I can't picture it. Athletics and, for athletics, breathing is very important, and also it, some could even say that it's more important for singers. Anyway, so I was very moved, and I would like to do everything that I can to see that our choir doesn't have to wear masks while they sing and can spread the holiday cheer.
If I may, Mr. Sailor, Mr. Subers, I just want to clarify, the concerts also involve band and orchestra players. It's not just the choir. So I would ask that the board keeps that in mind as they consider this.
The band is not ma, like a trumpeter can't wear a mask while they play trumpet, do they?
I think they're actually wearing masks with openings in them.
And there's something on the actual instrument.
Well, there's, yeah, well, they have a spittle guard, correct.
Bell, yeah.
They have a spittle, at the end of the, let's just use a trumpet, because that's, at the end of the trumpet, there's a guard, maybe there's a guard at the spittle valve. I haven't seen anything because it's such a tiny valve, but their, their masks are, are open so they could, because a lip can vibrate and make them, yeah.
I, I consider those athletic performances basically, I mean, it's, they're not, I understand, but, you know, the stamina and the fortitude that they take to put on, you know, it's in the breathing and the athleticism that goes into that. And to not have included them in an exemption, it's, it's a bit of an oversight. But anyway, I would love to include all the band.
Ms. Wyken, yep.
Just to be clear, I, I just think that with regards to this specific instance of a performance, that's, that's sort of irrelevant to students in the arts wearing masks. They've been wearing masks in band, orchestra, chorus since the beginning of the year based on the requirement for masking in the buildings. And so I, I guess my thought is, is unfortunately, with regard to timing, it's just, it's an unfortunate issue with timing. But I think that, you know, Mr. Dorr had put together a comment with regards to a compromise to allow a negative test, which I think would be a compromise. to allow a negative test, which I think would be a compromise to a no mask situation for a performance. But at this juncture, it's Monday and the concert is on Thursday. So do you see a compromise, other than just eliminating them for the sake of making parents that don't want their children to wear masks during performances? It's sort of a rhetorical question, but just to be clear, the children that are in the arts programs in our district right now wear masks at every instance of learning throughout that process.
Yes, and someday they won't. We need to get there.
I understand that we're moving in that direction, but I'm asking that if that's been the status quo up to this point, based on our current health and safety plan, I just am confused as to, on a Monday, to implement a workaround or a compromise to continue to keep everybody safe in that environment, especially considering we'll have an auditorium full of parents.
And I've, not to drone on and on, but let me, let me just answer briefly. The reason is because there's a new board, and the last board didn't work around. That's why, that's a part of why. So I'm just, and forgive me for being new, but.
No, there's just no need to offer forgiveness, except for the fact that administration in the state of Pennsylvania has put together a health and safety plan. So I, Dr. Russell, if you have a recommendation of how you'd like to move forward, if, would you like, would you advise at this time that you amend the health and safety plan to take into account the possibility that perhaps the masking order would be lifted? Or would you rather wait and see and err on the side of caution to continue to protect our families with some level of comfort in the next three days?
I think we all have to just take a, these are all really tough topics, whether it's ESER funds or, and now masking, you know, that we do it in a way. But I also want to underscore that, you know, we just saw pictures of kids performing with no masks in our buildings, and that was allowed. And so when we say that we don't allow these things, we do, and it was just presented to us. But there are different reasons why that might happen. When we're talking about, when we're talking about a chorus, you're talking about potentially 30, 40, 50 members on beams, and they're really close together. You also have, I don't think it's here, it's probably at a bigger, east or west auditorium, there's larger people. So we need to think about all those things, and probably the odds of the Supreme Court making a ruling on Wednesday are less than 2%.
I would say at this point that they would be slim, but I can't rule it out.
Yeah. But again, Dr. Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. And to answer Ms. White's question, my recommendation to the board would be to stay the course, get through the month, allowing our youngest learners to be fully vaccinated. That has always been a goal of ours. Afford them that opportunity, get through the holidays. And in January, on January 3rd, I would encourage the board to rethink where we are with this particular mitigation strategy. As Mr. Saylor mentioned, in the cabaret, the students weren't masked. They were primarily singing individually, more than six feet away from anyone. So kind of like eating lunch, only much farther away. In a concert, the students are in very close quarters, and that has raised questions for some. Eventually, those questions are going to go away. For right now, my recommendation would be, if we can hang in there another couple weeks and reevaluate in January, that's what I would suggest we do.
So, there's a lot going on, too, with the Supreme Court not knowing when they are going to answer this. I don't want to make anyone intentionally uncomfortable by rushing anything or seeming to be haphazard, so to speak, because I'm not haphazard. I've thought long about this already, really. And, but the potential order coming, I don't know, I'm more than willing to take a vote on this right now and move this meeting forward. Is the health and safety plan at all on the agenda? Or will it be, will it be brought up and discussed on, what is it, next Monday? If there is a change in the statewide policy?
So both the athletic health and safety plan, as well as the district's health and safety plan, are action items on the agenda in Section 4. The board could opt to put them on the consent agenda, and Monday, they would be approved as part of that agenda. It's possible to take action during the work session? The board does not typically do that, because it allows the public the opportunity to digest the conversation, have access to the information, and provide any feedback or comments between now and next Monday. But it is possible for the board tonight to recommend any items that appear on the work session as we work through them be consent items next week.
So, help me out here. What am I looking to do if?
The, it will be voted on, it's up for a vote next week.
But only the athletic side?
Actually, no, the amendments to the health and safety plan, any amendment to the athletic plan.
And to take the masks off possibly the student body and the choir? And what else is on the agenda?
Oh, I mean, everything's, depending on what happens, everything would be up for.
As far as the health and safety plan? Very good.
As far as the masking element, masking requirement.
I would say, I'm just going to give you my personal opinion, Mr. Keenan. Let's make the assumption that the Supreme Court on Wednesday rules that the mask mandate is illegal. I think our discussion then on our work, on our business meeting, should be about putting a policy together of mask choice that wouldn't start until the students come back to school January 3rd for multiple reasons. A, I don't like anything happening tomorrow. That's too soon. There always needs to be time to create the system, right? And B, it allows individuals who wanted to get vaccinated, meaning aged 5 to 11, that opportunity to fulfill their secondary shot, and even some teachers to fulfill their booster shot, and administrators to fulfill their booster shot. And then, then you're looking at, well, you know, the 16th, the board voted, whether they voted to continue or to not continue, it gives the administration ample time to put that next program together, rather than changing something immediately. That would just be my thought process.
I think you're probably right on, and I'm just more learning the procedure of being on a school board and what the timeframes involved exactly are. But that's all I have.
We don't need to do anything then to, we'll just, do we need to, what do we need to do to ensure that on Monday, the entire health and safety protocol plan is talked about?
Nothing. You can keep it on, keep it off the consent agenda.
Okay.
And it will be on your agenda for discussion, potential amendments, and approval.
That's fair. You can direct administration to be prepared Monday with some of those contingencies, those what-ifs, and what the responses would be on the part of the district. So, Mr. Keenan, to your questions, the approval of the health and safety plan with those three changes that I reviewed tonight is up there on the board agenda, as is the athletic health and safety plan. That really only reflects the mask, oh, sorry, that's so loud, sorry. The masking for participation as well as competition. If the board desires, administration can be prepared for additional discussion Monday night. And as Mr. Subers mentioned, it stays off the consent, and you can get more information and possibilities. There are districts considering contingencies that would then shift them to masks optional. For example, if transmission levels move to moderate or low, masking is optional. That's an example of what some districts are thinking about. There are others, you know, other contingencies that could be considered or prompts.
Thank you, thank you. And someday, we'll just be living with it. So we have to all think about how we are all going to get there.
Does anyone else have any other questions on the health and safety plan that Dr. Russell presented? Or any questions about what'll happen on the work, on the business meeting on Monday? Super duper.
Hey, so can we move on to Item 4.02? That is the enrollment report. If you could project the December 2021 enrollment report, please. Mrs. Smith, did you have any comments on this?
Really briefly, I wanted to point out that you will notice that. It slightly since the November enrollment report, because we hit that trimester change, and we had several families within our elementary program request a change either from Viking Academy to in-person or in-person to Viking Academy. So you'll notice that the Viking Academy numbers have decreased slightly, and our, some of the classes back in our in-person setting have increased. And I just wanted to say, we have been able to accommodate every request from a family, regardless of the change that they are looking for. While we are working towards those trimester or semester changes, we have also accommodated families who have requested for extenuating circumstances at different times. Thank you.
Okay, Item 4.03. The recommended action will be a motion to approve the 2022-2023 High School Program Planning Guide, changes as presented. Are there any additional questions, comments? If not, can we move this to consent? Okay, Item 4.04. The recommended action will be a motion to approve the revised district assessment schedule as presented. Any additional comments or questions? So we will move 4.04 to consent as well. Item 4.05. The recommended action will be a motion to approve a cooperative agreement with Warren County School District, consistent with the previously executed cyber services agreement and Article XV-G of the school code, as reviewed by the solicitor. Any comments or questions?
My question is with regards, so this is an extension of our current agreement with Warren County? Is that accurate?
It is. It really is a document that outlines all of the school districts that have entered into agreements with Warren County, and it clearly states that we are still responsible for, you know, the grading, the attendance, truancy, all of those things that we take on as a public school. It really just solidifies that we are responsible for that as they maintain being our students.
And it's a subsidiary agreement that Warren County is requiring as a result of our adoption of, or our contractual relationship with them, and requiring it of all participating districts.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. So with regards to the previous agreement and contract that we have with Warren County for the cyber education services, when is the expiration of that contract? Can you remind me?
That was one year, I believe.
It was one year?
I believe so.
So I felt like this was premature, so I didn't really understand what this particular document, how it tied in, but.
This is kind of corollary to it. It's just, they want everybody who's participating to be operating under the same rules, which are basically the rules we've already agreed to.
Statement of acknowledgement that this is all, you're all in the same collaborative. Okay. And so then, I guess I'll be curious to see how progress is monitored with the curriculum with Warren County. That was sort of what I was wondering if we looked at, but it's premature, so, thank you.
Mrs. Baker and I certainly can look at, you know, we'll solicit some feedback from our parents involved to see how it's gone, to determine if we'd make a recommendation for next year or not.
Beautiful, thank you, because it's a new provider. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Are we comfortable moving 4.05 to consent? Okay. Item 4.06. The recommended action will be a motion to ratify the proposed allocations for the Act 24 ARP ESER funds as presented, based on discussion earlier. I'm not sure we are ready to put this on consent. Is there further discussion or comments?
I just, I would agree. I think we're, need to hold.
Is it only this list of allocations? Because there was, it's only this particular group of allocations? Not the whole other page that we saw, correct?
Right. You previously approved that whole other page several months ago. I don't recall if that was July or August, I'd have to look back, but the board approved those ESER III allocations previously. So it's just these new set of sides.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we will leave 4.06 off of consent.
I'm just going to stay in case there's other.
Okay. Item 4.07 is a placeholder. Item 4.08. The recommended action will be a motion to approve the 2021-2022 Health and Safety Plan, Version 11, as presented. Can we move this to consent?
I thought we were leaving it off.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, that one is going to be left off consent.
So we will leave that off consent pending further information. And then, Item 4.09. The recommended action will be a motion to approve the 2021-2022 Athletic Health and Safety Plan, Version 8, as presented. Are we comfortable moving this one to consent, or do we want to leave this one off as well? Okay, so we'll leave Item 4.09 off of consent as well, and that concludes Section 4.
Mr. Dorr?
Thank you. 5.01 is a finance update. Mr. Weaver, you're up. Good evening, everybody. Sorry, it took me a while to get from that seat over to here. We have to replace these seats, they hurt. I'm sure everybody would agree at this point in time. Okay. So what we're going to do is we're going to move forward with the finance update, maybe? I don't know, maybe the projector's tired, too. What was that? Okay, green button is a good thing. All right, so we'll go through a five-year capital project projection. Remember, this is something that we do on an annual basis, and that brings the board and the public up to, up to speed on the multiple different projects that we're tracking, working in essence with some of the differences and changes with Mr. Fabrizio here, who's a newer Director of Operations. And remember that this was set aside back in 2018, with the board at the time allowed us to go out with a purposeful, comprehensive capital project planning. We worked with Adams and Meckley out of Berks County, and we built a tremendously large booklet of information that ran the entire gamut for each and every one of our seven school district buildings and our administration building. Remember, this is considered a living and breathing document, and that essentially means that what we present tonight, tomorrow may change. We have the up-to-date estimates that we, that we have garnered throughout this entire process, and we will continue to look at these items. Some key notes. There are project numbers associated with these items, and remember, those reflect back to the 2018 actual presentation from Adams and Meckley to the school board at that time. There are also some other cheat codes that we utilize. We do have items that, since that initial presentation in 2018, we've added through either Mr. Klemmer, and you will see Klemmer XX, or since Mr. Fabrizio has been here, it says Fab XX. So, and then, one further delineation as we move forward, is we have gone through and reevaluated a 0 to 5 timeline, a 6 to 10 timeline, and a 10-plus-years column as well, which indicates our estimates and our priorities as we move forward with these various functions. So before we go to what we haven't done, we'd like to first move forward with a listing quick of what we've completed in 2021. We do have a very active ESCO 4.0, a guaranteed energy savings contract that we've been working on. It's our fourth one, that's why it's 4.0. We have had three successful ones. First one was in 2013, 2011, 2013, 2017, and then 2019, 2020. So we continue to work on those. Total projects completed, ESCO 4.0 and non-ESC, non-ESC totaled a little, slightly under $3 million, and those are broken down. You can notice here on the matching ID number, those are the codes that I had referenced earlier, and then you can see the listing of what was done and how it was done and what the estimated costs were. So, looking at the school board tonight, and the public is capital projects of all of our buildings, split through various functions and columns, if you will, and silos, of $32 million, almost $33 million worth of capital projects. This is not unusual. This is something that we're looking at from a perspective of, we have buildings, what are their ages? How often are they used? What is the wear and tear on those buildings? And we also have the incorporation of administration and district-wide programs as well, which we'll get into. Each one of these line items has a category then that I will talk about, and once you get the hang of this, you'll see how this works. I'm not going to go through every building. It's there for everybody to take a look at and to review at your own, at your own time. And of course, if you have any questions or particular concerns tonight, we can go over those at this point in time. The setup is the same for each building, as I. this point in time. The setup is the same for each building, as I had mentioned. So we have the PV High School, what the total enrollment is as of October 2021, total square footage of the building. The original square was built in 1972, was renovated in 1997, and again, in 2006, we added the competition gymnasium and the three-story science and technology wing. A line item summary total simply shows that there are about 27 projects that we are tracking for the high school. And remember, we haven't set aside any dollars for these at this particular point in time. So this is just a running total of items that we, as a school board and administration, have to work into funding and various other opportunities for us to get these, some of these items done. That's your summary page right there. Cost estimate in the high school, almost $5.5 million, and we are recommending at this point in time, over the, sometime over the next five years, you look at $2.6 million, $316,000, and $2.569. Again, these are just recommendations. Here are the totals and how we come up to these. There are two different slides for the high school, and it runs the gamut. Everything from exterior masonry walls with an estimate, up top of $177,000, all the way down to music band orchestra, fix various components in these areas in these rooms of $87,000. Remember, there are backup detailed informational sheets associated in that, in those feasibility studies that were reported out that can support each and every one of these. As long as they have an HS1 in a number, or an MSE in a number, that means it came from, directly from the original presentation. And then you can see there where we have, for instance, the J-FAB XX. You can see there that the PV High School AHU replacement, there are 10 units that we are tracking, and those are still original units that we no longer can find support for. So before these go out and they put us in a difficult situation, we need to recognize the fact that we need to seriously consider over the next several years, the replacement of 10 units, AHU units at the high school. Again, totals $5.5 million. And it's a similar setup for each and every building. I will take my time, go through that if you want me to. If not, in order to facilitate the conversation tonight, I'll just leave it out there for your consideration. Some of the capital projects that we have completed over the past several years are listed there, and obviously, one of the bigger ones obviously is the turf field that we put in, and that's listed under the athletics. So we do make a considerable consideration for that. The biggest part this year for ESCO 4.0 is the boilers that we've replaced as part of that process, and we continue to look at other areas. Specific to this presentation, we are recognizing the fact that we are moving several capital projects out of the capital project realm, and we are looking at placing them under a technology thing. Remember, that's just a notification for us that it belongs under a technology conversation. I do know Mr. Ganesh has a lot of different ideas. So we did take those physically out of the original report, and we placed them here. We will still continue to track them. We do know that Mr. Ganesh has a lot of different ideas associated, for instance, with data network. By the time we get to them, we could be five years out. It could be CAT 6 that we've got to put in throughout the whole building, or something different that we don't know about that Mr. Ganesh does know about. And something like tile ceilings, we, we had them in the original report. We kept them in the past couple of years in talking with Mr. Fabrizio. These are items that we're taking out, we're moving into the general fund for the operations department, because tile really isn't a capital project. Mr. Fabrizio and his staff can purchase tile ceilings and then go through and replace them as need be, more on a maintenance perspective. Middle School East, again, simple cut sheet there that shows East, and you will see, one of the big, big strands throughout this is that the older the building, essentially the more capital projects that we are tracking and need to follow up on over the next several years. Again, another listing, all those MSE numbers, they tie directly into the big fat booklet with the detailed description on them. And then the J-FAB, JFB XX, the gym floor and the bleacher replacement, that is a newer one that we are discovering that we need to look at. And the middle school east nurse counseling and AHU units, again, things that we have struggled with this summer have suddenly become an issue. So now that we know that, now that we put them, we put them on the list and we start tracking them. Some of the items that we have finished at East, and again, there's the year associated with them, and again, the move into technology to take some things out and then move into the general fund as well. That doesn't mean we forgot about them. That just means that we're doing them something a little bit differently than considering some sort of a capital project bond funding, or some available monies to offset some of these costs. We're gonna track them differently. We still need to set aside monies, though. Middle School West, again, all of a sudden it's almost 20 years old. It was built in 2004. Similar figure, about $7.3 million. They only have about 13 projects that we are tracking, though, and so their list is a little bit more smaller. However, you're getting into some heavy-duty dollar figure associated with the air handling units at, at Middle School East. Please keep in mind, school board members, especially the newer school board members, the oil tank conversion to natural gas, that is part of our ESCO 4.0 plan. We do have, we've been tracking that for several years. This goes back probably five or six years, and the idea is that we would fund a project to get natural gas up to Middle School West and remove the oil tank. Unfortunately, last year, the board does remember that the oil tank had a little bit of a hiccup. So what we actually did was we took the oil tank offline. We are renting an oil tank so that we can continue to feed fossil fuel heating oil into the building to heat the building. That is a long-term project that is suddenly becoming more and more of an issue for us moving forward. But we have made accommodations for now. Ideally, we'd like to run that natural gas line up there. Natural gas is seven times cheaper than heating oil at this point in time, so that would, the return on investment on that item in particular would be within a couple of years, which is remarkable. Some of the projects that we finished, again, just listed, and again, some items that we moved to general fund. You can see consistently that most of the items that we moved to the general fund, Mr. Fabrizio was working out ideas within his general fund, operating's budget, and they're basically smaller in dollar value. Evergreen, 28 individual smaller projects, $2.5 million. Again, as listed, probably the, the biggest thing there is the evergreen second-floor carpet. The board does remember that we've replaced the first floor two summers ago, last year, and the other elementary schools, we got to the second floor. But because we were using evergreen for most of our summer projects, we just couldn't get in there and do that this, this summer. Next summer is a different story, and we'll plan accordingly and finish that particular part of it. Then, a couple of the things that we've added, J-FAB XX, the gym floor replacement, because the rubber floor in, in evergreen is bubbling in several places. Again, our staff does a tremendous job. They cut it. They, they have a blow dryer out there. They re-glue it. They've been doing some wonderful things with it, but it's about time that we address that. And evergreen is actually shrinking on, on the one side, where there is a door access, so the cold air kind of blows in there, and the rubber flooring has kind of shrunk and come off the wall a little bit. If you've been in evergreen lately, you can see exactly where that is. So we'd like to re, re-address that issue. And then we do have a big item at evergreen, which is the univent replacements. Those have not been adjusted in any of our ESCO projects, and so we need to address those. That is a $1 million hit with our current costs that we've talked about, with Mr. Fabrizio doing a lot of good legwork and trying to estimate what that dollar figure would be. Some of the items that we have done, the key component to evergreen is we have finished the chiller and replaced the original chiller. So that is a key factor for us. And again, some more movement of some other items moved into the general fund and then moved out into technology. Again, it hasn't gone away. It's just something that we need to focus somewhat differently than capital projects at this point in time. We may ultimately end up calling it a capital project expense, but for now, for our purposes, for looking at the building and the infrastructures, that would be key for us to remove. Shranksville, again, the biggest part of Shranksville is it's newer, but we did replace the roof in this ESCO 4.0, so that's a, a positive. And we have about $1.8 million over, spread over 13 projects, or 18, 13 projects as listed. Again, the biggest part are these AHU handlers. Again, they have not been addressed in any of our ESCOs. The big units on, in our buildings, on top of the roofs, they, we have done an awful lot of work on all of our buildings, but the actual air handling units outside of South have not been addressed in the actual classrooms themselves. And again, there's a listing of items that we have done at Shranksville. The biggest part, of course, was the replacement of the roof that is right there that we did with ESCO 4.0. Skip back similarly, $2.5 million. 26 projects, about $2.5 million. And again, you will see another area of concern for natural gas service. The actual natural gas pipeline, and that is, that is our only other building that has heating oil, the natural gas service is right across the street. Conversations with PICO that have gone on for years and years and years, it will cost us an awful lot of money to come across the street. Reason is, is that's a bigger pipeline, and for them to go through, they just simply don't cut off the pipeline and then put the valve that allows it to make a 90-degree turn, go left into our building. What they have to do is they have to ramp down that pressure in that pipeline before they can put that L-bend that goes to our school. So there's a lot more work that PICO is saying they have to do in order for us to get that. That would be a key idea for us to get, again, because the natural gas is so much cheaper than the fuel oil that we are paying. Continuation, again, a listing of AHU units that we continue to look at, and again, univents within our actual classrooms as well. That is a newly, newly discovered item through Mr. Fabrizio that we need to continue to look at, and that has bumped up, if you notice, within five years. Some other items listed as well. And South, South, we've done an awful lot of work over the past two ESCOs, and so they have about eight projects, and that's down to about $255,000. And again, some of these items are listed, but one of the other items is, you can see there, the AHUs. Now, we did significant work at South with our AHU units, the actual floor units in our classrooms. We actually took the guts out of those in one of our ESCOs and put new, a new four-pipe system in. So it used to be an old two-way, and one of the ESCOs did some good work and made it a four-pipe system, which saved those actual units, but there still had to be some significant work that went into those items. And obviously, there is the big long list of capital projects finished at South, most recently from 2019, essentially since the 2018 presentation. Almost $5 million worth. Athletic summary, you can see where we're at with about 17 projects that we need to look at. Everything from renovating fields to looking at various scoreboards that Mr. Felty has brought forward to our, our most recent Safety and Operations Committee. We're beginning to work on the replacement of the scoreboards for both the lower field and Kenan Stadium as well. And just to make a mention, there was an original plan when we went through with the turf fields for four total fields. Those were split into the fields that we completed and two additional synthetic fields at the Hilltop. We've moved that back to 11-plus years, basically 10-plus years for us to address that item. Coincidentally, the dollar figure for the $3.5 million, also, the timing actually coincides with the fact that the original turf that we put on two years ago will probably need to be replaced at that time. So that is a, an administration and a school board decision about what, what we want to do with that, as far as moving forward and adding fields, not recommending that by any stretch at this point in time, but that would be the time for us to look at that, to say that we actually have to replace the turf on the original fields that we've done. As far as items that we've, we have listed and completed, you can see there. And again, one little thing there that we moved into the general fund is repair the gates and fence. So as far as the administration district-wide, this is a newer slide from previous years. We have about $850,000. You can see where we've broken down some various items. Included in there is the safety vestibule. The safety vestibule is part of the process that we've utilized with KPN. We are in the final stages of the planning and design with who we've hired to move forward with that, as, as the design perspective through KPN. And anticipation is for installation for the safety vestibule at the administration building to be in for the summer of 2022. Additionally, conversation has continued between Mr. Miller, Mr. Fabrizio, and multiple different administrators in regards to a card access program for all of our buildings. So you not only have to have the card access, which means a software, but each and every individual door you would like to have card access in, you need to change it up, and you need to have the proper components inside the door. So that, that would be about $230,000. We, we do have an initial design and plan that we're working on, that we would like to show over the next several months at the Safety and Operations Committee, to, to show you what we, what we plan on, on doing with those items. And another item to mention, the outdoor LED replacement. We had, many of our outdoor LEDs were replaced as part of ESCO 3.0. Unfortunately, ESCO 3.0 is now out of warranty, and low and behold, a lot of those LED lights are now failing. Mr. Fabrizio has not given up hope. He has been working with Phil Maury, who is the school district ESCO consultant, and Mike Hanson, who is the CM3 representative, to see if we can have some sort of a goodwill gesture on their part, because we've provided an awful lot of business for, for them over the years, to see if they can come forward, at least meet us halfway with some of this cost. They seem to be open for that conversation, so Mr. Fabrizio and I continue to bang on that drum to see if they can give us a little bit of a break. $850,000. As far as funds that are available at this point in time, you can see I did not update this slide, but I, I do need to address that, and I will provide that in, in, in an update on the weekend to the school board so that you can see that. Remember, this item does not include unassigned fund balance. Unassigned fund balance sits at the maximum cap at 8% as well, for discussion purposes. So the goals for the next 12 months for capital projects through December 2022, continue to review the projects for need to avoid emergency. Planning, remember, is key to success. Match the one-time money with available funds, with the one-time capital project funds that are available for the projects that we need to do. Focus areas are in areas that have recently become issues, like gym flooring, AHU issues, completion of project areas, like the evergreen carpeting going to, changing to LVT, and finishing up ESCO 4.0 for the natural gas pipeline at West and the chillers. And then, of course, manage the emergencies to address issues once and for all. Okay, that's a, that's a, that's a heavy lift on any, any school board, especially the school board for tonight. So, any questions at all? If, I mean, if not, you know, if you do have some, let us know, and we'll be sure that we share that. Like I said, I've gotta adjust that one slide anyway and show you what the available fund balances are. Okay, just to let the board know, we are tracking a refunding opportunity. We did hear from Jamie Doyle from PFM, who is our financial consultant and financial advisor. We are tracking a bond issue of combining two bonds, 2017 and 2017A. Total bond issue premium amount is $18,175, and the estimated cost and estimated savings net of all costs, as conservatively provided in the handout, is about 2.48% of the refunding, or about $450,000. Remember that those items, the savings are basically split between next year, because until this settles, won't be until May 2022, but there are about $240,000 in savings to recognize for '22, '23, and there are about $149,000 of that $450 for '23, '24, and then there are some smaller amounts. The key component to this is we can do this because we have a good fund balance, we have a good, steady bond rating, and investors like our, our, our bonds. So there's big competition for us in that, and we are also looking at two different ways of running this. We're not just doing the internet auction, like we've been very successful in the past, but we're also doing an RFP for a bank proposal as well. but we're also doing an RFP for a bank proposal as well. We'll run both scenarios, then we'll compare where we get the best costs. Jamie did say that that's unusual for us, but because of our characteristics, our good bond rating, our good fund balances, she thinks it would be advantageous for us to look at both. It's the first time she's doing this, and she's recommended this, and the finance committee is all for it. Gives us really a true option for us to investigate. Okay, and of course, the board motions will show up in January for that as per guidance with Jamie. So one other area that we need to address, our teacher sub rates through STS is our our contracted provider for teacher subs. Current rates are for tier one, which is day one to day twenty, are a hundred and five dollars a day, and tier two is day twenty and above in all middle school subs at one hundred and fifteen dollars a day. Our recommendation is to increase our tier one to one hundred and twenty five dollars per day and tier two in middle schools to one hundred and fifty dollars per day. Why we need to do this? Well, generally speaking, we have an inability for STS or anybody really to provide the substitutes that we need on a daily basis in this current environment. It was tough before the pandemic, it is super tough now. And so unless we can get a hold of these substitutes, it's very hard for us to maintain that educational excellence that we expect to provide to our students.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Where does that put us in the competitive balance with the other school districts around us?
That is a great question, Mr. Sailor, and there you go. All right, so if you can look here, this is information that was provided by the MCIU reviewed by Mr. Moran and Mrs. Hurd. So Perkiumon Valley is right here, and again, I just put considering, here are our initial rates. And you can see where they compare to our surrounding school districts. We're behind, basically, we are the low in the comparison of those school districts. And the the thought process is that these other school districts have already increased their rates due to COVID. Look at North Penn. North Penn is already at one hundred and eighty, one hundred and ninety, and Mr. Moran smiles when he will tell you this. They still have a hard time finding substitutes. So the idea is that we make ourselves a little bit better, position ourselves a little bit better comparison to our local school districts and who we compete against, like Satterton and Methacton. And if we go one twenty five and one fifty in these tiers, that makes us a little bit more attractive and comparative to Springfield. That's the idea, and the hope is that we can then do competition with them. So if somebody's thinking, I'm not going to go to Perk Valley because I like the kids, I like the administration, I like the school board, I like all the buildings, but they just don't pay enough. Now we're going to be in the right ballpark with these recommendations. And again, we continue to look at other.
I'm sorry, Mr. Weaver, I'm sorry, Dr. Campley had a question, I apologize.
Yes.
My concern looking at this is, you know, we were talking about being in being able to be competitive with St. Springfield. They're they haven't increased yet, but they're considering. What our tier two brings us to is where they're at now, so if they consider and they do increase, we're still behind the eight ball.
That's that's correct, and Mr. Moran recommends that we move forward with this and see how that plays out. And if we need to come back to the school board in a couple of months because they have jumped and we've recognized that we're still losing subs, we'll have to come back at that time. And similar to that question, Dr. Campley, Mr. Moran continues to work at other ideas such as something like permanent subs for each building. This, the idea was reviewed at the Finance Committee meeting in December, and Mr. Moran is working on data and will present in the near future on what that might look like as well. Again, the idea is that a permanent sub at each building, there would be seven, would would be hired. And there are other subs that we have, what do you call them, Mr. Moran? The other, the four subs that we have now, those are power subs.
We currently have four, what they call district subs or the power subs from STS, our service. They're unable to fill them right now, so we actually have zero filled positions. And again, that's due to our current rates. So, you know, we are looking at proposals to move away from STS for the building substitutes and possibly have our own building substitutes that we would then hire and have a better chance of of filling those positions.
Two different avenues that we continue to work on.
It's not like retired teachers are going to bat, are they available as substitutes?
They are, we do have to work with Peasars, the retirement system, to get emergency availability for them to to come approval for them to work with us, which we have been granted that in the past. But again, it's still pretty limited to availability.
Oh, they're, Mr. Keenan, they're not allowed to work because of the pension, correct?
That's correct.
Correct, unless they have emergency approvals, which we have done because of the lack of substitutes that exist currently.
We have, we have that emergency now or no?
We have in the past had approval from the state, the retirement system. It's on an individual case by case basis, we have to apply for approval. It does go through a process. Once they approve that person, it is for a limited time, and then they can serve as a substitute for us within the district.
But we're not currently doing that right now?
We are, we do, yeah, we do, we do have people that have come forward requesting to substitute, and we've gotten to the state for approval on that.
Mr. Door? You look like you had a question, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the only other thing that I would like to add is remember with the capital projects, obviously, you can see we have thirty three million dollars in capital projects, and we have about five million dollars set aside in capital project funds available to us. We do have unassigned fund balance to work with as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Weaver. So moving on to five point zero two, the grants and donations. It looks like we have four separate donations, the list is up on the screen. Thousand dollar grant from Patient First for South Elementary. Dr. Weston and his wife donated three hundred and twenty dollars to the high school library. Ten thousand dollars was given by the South Home and School for Playground Equipment, and five thousand was given by the National Environmental Education Foundation and Samsung for Classroom Technology. Five point zero three. It's a motion to ratify the approval of a one year contract with SOS Group Inc. in Phoenixville to provide temporary custodial services at a rate of twenty four dollars and ninety cents per hour per employee for up to ten temporary custodial positions. Any questions? Okay, let's move that to consent, please. Five point zero four, it's motion, five point zero four is motion to approve the phone service agreement with Tele Systems as our primary phone provider and Comstar as backup phone provider at a cost of nine hundred and thirty two dollars and twenty two cents a month for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year as presented and recommended by the Safety and Operations Committee. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, please move to consent. Five point zero five, it's a motion to approve a change order to Keystone Fire and Security, formerly known as Comsys, for the lower field sound system, as originally approved in June of twenty twenty one in the amount of five thousand, four hundred and fifty seven dollars to allow for the installation of surge protection for safety of the sound equipment. Any questions? Okay, can we move that to consent, please? Five point zero six, it's a motion to approve a transfer of four hundred thousand dollars from unassigned fund balance into fund balance committed for capital project effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. This transfer brings the district's unassigned fund balance to under eight percent of the total budget expenditures for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, as required by state law. Any questions? Okay, if you can move that to consent, please. Five point zero seven, it's a motion to request an increase, the substitute teacher pay as follows. Tier one rate, one to twenty days, from the current one hundred and five to one hundred and twenty five dollars a day, and tier two, twenty one dollars or twenty one days and up, from the current one hundred and fifteen dollars a day to one hundred and fifty dollars a day. Any questions? Okay, if you can move that to consent, please. And lastly, five point zero eight, we have a budget update. Mr. Weaver, you have to walk that long way again.
Thank you, Mr. Door. So tonight we have the equal sign presentation for the twenty two, twenty three general fund budget. We have one adjustment that we've made, we've already provided the revenues at last month's meeting. We are recognizing an adjustment of one hundred and sixty eight thousand, zero twenty for Peasars for the correct rate, which remember, the Peasars rate is uncertified at this point in time. We are working off a projection that is two and a half years old because Peasars has not updated their their rates, their projected rates yet. Thirty five point six two, so that is a revenue enhancer because remember, that rate is going from thirty four point nine four to thirty five point six two. Unfortunately, on the other side of the coin, the expenditures go up, double that. Because remember, the revenue side for the Peasars is that the state shares fifty percent of the cost in Peasars and FICA. So that's a revenue stream, but the expense is always double that because it's fifty percent. It's a hundred percent of the the revenue, double the revenue, I should say. For tonight's presentation, we are showing revenues of one hundred and fifteen million, two seventy five, three twelve. Again, what we've done is we have, we look at it in three year increment. We have the prior year that was completed for June thirty, twenty twenty one. We have the current year that we're tracking, which is our budget guestimates versus where our actuals are. And then we're trying to extrapolate that and move those forward into next year's projection. So we always have three years going along with various functions that adjust the future presentations. Local revenues further broken down, eighty nine million, six twelve, three eighty two. Real estate tax collection rate still strong at ninety six point five percent. We have strong performances for the EIT, and this year we backed it up with a Berkheimer estimate for rationale. Berkheimer has been our longtime collector of our earned income tax, and we are utilizing their projection as a basis for us with our data and our our current projections that we've historically done in the business office. We have a slight increase in interest earnings, but cautious for now because remember, we're very limited in what investments we can invest in. And right now, we are earning a point two percent on those monies. We can't enter into the private equity equity of the market, that's not allowed. So we have to do the best that we can with what we can for interest earnings. Remember, that is an alternative revenue source. So if the interest rates would go up, if they, let's just say they would double to a point four, we would instantaneously recognize an additional three hundred thousand dollars in revenue if it just goes up to a point four. Does it get there? I'm not sure, but we'll take a look at that and consistently monitor that over time as we build our budget for twenty two, twenty three. Turning the page to state monies, there are a number of issues with the state monies. Obviously, the governor hasn't given their budget, they will not do that until February, so that impacts some of these items. I just want to point out that the special education hasn't shown an increase for the twenty two, twenty three budget, but that's based on prior year's performance. So now that we have the annual financial numbers, we backfill those, and we look, where are our budget? Where we kept them solid and where we can make an adjustment for that. We do know that our special education costs, which is a main driver of that variable, certainly have not gone down. We know that. So we do know that that revenue stream, if we base it upon what we actually received for twenty twenty one, will be something we'll look at and we'll make that adjustment. Another key component is a rental reimbursement. When you follow through the PlanCon process and you go through the construction of a building, planning and construction is what PlanCon stands for. The state says if you follow our rules and regulations, we'll make sure that we share and give you some revenues back depending upon a ratio of every dollar you spend for your debt service, we'll give you seventeen cents on the dollar or twenty seven cents on the dollar, depending upon the measurables. Over time, we, the PlanCon process itself from the state has broken down. That means that if you enter into a process to build a building in twenty fifteen, the promise for the reimbursement from the state was not there. All of our issues that we have done, if they have not been bond refundings, have been associated with the ESCO programs. Those ESCO programs did not follow the PlanCon process, and that's on purpose. That's the beauty of the ESCO that we saw. So there is no reimbursement on those monies going forward, and those debt service expenditures that we pay, there is no reimbursement that is shared with the state. So we are showing a reflection and a reduction of four hundred and forty five thousand dollars, which essentially ties into where the actual number was for the rental reimbursement because that's that's actual data. Okay, and you can see over the years, we have been as high as one point five million dollars, and we've been as low as where we were last year for three hundred, three thousand. That's because each one of these new bond issues is not getting any rental reimbursement as moving forward. Another key component here is the retirement item. You can see here, we're at eight million, nine thirty two, six eighty six in revenue, double that. That is our expenditure on the expenditure side. So when we talk about the retirement, which I benefit from and every employee in Pennsylvania benefits from, not going to sugarcoat that one, the revenue stream is good, almost nine million dollars, but we've got almost an eighteen million dollar expenditure being shown because of Peasars. And remember, we as a school board and administration don't control that. Those rates are set by the government, by the state, and they typically certify the rate December first. Well, guess what? Now it's December sixth, and we still don't have what that rate will be. So those board members that have been here before, you know the game that the state does. We sit here and we wait for those numbers to be published. And then federal revenues, we keep it steady at seven hundred and forty one thousand, two oh four. Remember, the general guidance from our professional organizations have been, when you see that big number that Laurie Smith put up there for all of those federal monies, because we have three years plus to spend them until twenty twenty four, the recommendation is, don't put them in your budget because these are the revenues and the expenditures always match for federal. And essentially, when you use them and you expend them, that's when you recognize the revenue dollar associated with that. So to do so and to plan on, hey, we're going to spend two million dollars this particular year, and then for us to have conversation at the board level and say, we don't like that idea, just kind of like what we were just talking about, that would put our budget off kilter. So the professional organizations say, don't do it if you can avoid it. That way, also, we avoid that cliff when those federal monies run out. We're not left with a huge gap between our revenues and expenditures. Here is a cut sheet, I mentioned Berkheimer. This is, this is our tracking method, and this is directly from their projection letter. We are at thirteen point seven, which is right in between where they're predicting. We will continue to monitor that and adjust accordingly. On the right hand side is a sheet that we track on a daily basis, a monthly basis, and this is the key for us. We continue to look at that number because that compares all of these numbers where we were compared to the year prior. We have a direct calculation there that shows if we're positive or negative, and we make adjustments moving forward. Here's a snapshot that we included associated with our revenues over the past couple of years versus budget and to actual numbers and what the variances have been. So we budgeted here, we were half a percent off up to here for twenty nineteen, we were two point three seven percent off now. A number of different issues could have gone into that, but one of those key factors has been the growth of the earned income tax over the years that we continue to watch. Here's just another way to look at it a little bit differently, specifically with the local revenues only. So you can see here when people say, okay, you know, eighty percent of our revenues come from the local sources, how how predictable and how correct are we as we're talking about eighty million dollars? We're one point seven percent off or two point oh six percent off. Twenty twenty, we actually missed that mark, we're super close, though. So you can see that we are consistently doing what we need to do to get the best out of these dollar figures moving forward. I mentioned interest earnings. Here are interest earnings in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, which are with a much bigger interest rate. And that's not because we didn't invest properly, that's because the interest rate that we we were allowed to invest in was at a point one, as opposed to a two point three or something like that. So that is, again, that's another one of those areas that we take assumptions and look at. And it's a passive alternative revenue source for us that helps to make our budgets equal. Any questions on the revenues? Moving quickly into the proposed expenditures for the first time. One of the things that we do is we set the projection and the enrollment projection based upon a nine year cohort survival method. This tracks and has done a remarkable job of tracking. We're all from live births through our buildings, gathering variables, bringing it down, and then projecting where they're, where the enrollment will be. Right now, we're at about five thousand, one hundred and nineteen for as of November. Right now, we're at about five thousand, one hundred and nineteen for as of November. And it is predicting that we have a reduction of one hundred and fifty-two students. Again, it's something to help us model our budget and our budgetary expenditures as we move forward. Here are the expenditures for tonight, one hundred and twenty-two million, zero fifteen, eight fifty-one. It is a four percent increase budget year to budget year, twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three. Each one of these line items now has a breakdown behind it. So for instance, real quick, high-level topics, if people say, hey, why did the budget go up by this amount? Here are some line items that we currently have. Remember how this works. We are five months into this year. We just got the results of how we did last year. And we're trying to project it through the next seven months and then predict the next twelve months. And that's how we, as far as what the total expenditures will be. It's not unusual for us to have a higher expenditure budget number in December when we look at what goes in there. We do have five new positions in at the high school, one thousand dollars. It's both salaries at two eighty-four and benefits associated coverage. True-up, true-up costs are when we look at what we predicted in the budget versus if we actually hired them. We're tracking it, but we have not removed it yet. Last year, as part of our budget, we were a lot more sure of where we would add some of these numbers. The budget just can't, and if the board's okay with that, we'll continue to track that and show where we're. We've got some fossil fuels like diesel going up in procurement deals with the MCIU. It's a patent procurement program through the MCIU. And we have a buying, phrasing them what they're going to have. And they honor that for us because it's not just Perkyomen Valley, it's G and Electric. So those items are beneficial for us. The Peasers increase, again, that's a straight, flat seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars at the thirty-five point six-two. Again, it's currently thirty-four point nine-four. That will change once that rate is certified. Health insurance, straight six percent trend. That adds six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to that large nugget that is the health, medical health insurance, which is over ten million dollars at this point in time between your medical health and your prescriptions. Tuition costs, charter and special education. We are, we continue to look at that. Those costs are going up. However, we are hopeful that in the programming that we have in place, we continue to attract a lot of those students back into the Perkyomen Valley School District as the pandemic ebbs and flows. And we want those kids to come back. And I think that our educational expertise will help to get those kids back as well. And so we'll have savings there. Right now, we've budgeted almost one point nine million dollars. Couple of years ago, that was at a million. But because over the past couple of years, a lot of students have left because of the situation at hand, we expect them to come back. We've had to recognize those increases. Safety upgrades and services. Mr. Miller has been busy working on safety upgrades for the school district. Liability, general liability. Auto, cyber insurance is increased by sixty-six thousand, six hundred. Again, these are initial numbers. We will get two or three different looks at the health insurance through the Buxmont. We'll get, which is another consortium that's set up for school districts for purchasing health insurances. Self-funded, we are self-funded, but we do have a certain component of our pricing that is part of the overall consortium. Software increases of one hundred and forty thousand dollars. That now equals six hundred and seventy-six thousand, four forty. Several years ago, that was underfunded, underbudgeted. And so we are recognizing the fact that we had additional costs reaching that peak. And debt service increase, as it currently stands, of seventy-three thousand, four forty-six. Again, if we do a bond refunding, that will go from an add of seventy-three thousand, four forty-six to maybe a negative net two hundred thousand. Again, it takes time for us to go through the budgetary process, but those are the heavy hitters. Here are, here are a couple of slides that were included in the Education Committee. I just add them in there just so that Mrs. Smith and I know that we're on the same page as we move forward with this. You can tell, we reiterate the five positions that we have in the budget and items that we are watching. We are monitoring special education, English language development, high school counseling, for instance, based upon the needs that develop over the next several months. And we continue to investigate those other three items as well. It's not a given. We still have to go through the process of Education Finance Committee. If they have anything to do with Safety and Operations, we'll run those through the committees as well. But we expect to have a lot of these things discussed in committees moving forward until we bring them forward for school board to either include them, adjust them in any way, shape, or form that the budget dictates to us. Salaries line item, you can see that's a straight one million, eight seventy-seven. As of tonight, you can see that those positions have all been added. That is a straight contract with the agreement in there moving forward, and we added those five positions. True-up costs have not been removed. Again, just another caution there. Moving to the two hundreds, here's a, there's a whole bunch in here. And you can see that it's thirty-three point six million dollars at this, at this first equal sign. Key component, FICA and Peasers, we already talked about. Health insurance increases driven by Buxmont. And remember, we will receive three or four different looks. They call them first look, second look, third look. As their numbers harden, they will pass along those savings or adjustments to the school district. And also because we're self-funded, our experience numbers will continue to pile in every month that we're here. So now October's actual usage will dump into that number and we'll move forward and make adjustments as needed. And again, we're always trying to tie in to where were we last year for final budget numbers because those are the most current actual figures we have. And how does that compare to the previous years? And where were we with our budget and then make adjustments moving forward? In the object three hundreds, we have a slight increase for legal fees. And again, most of those legal fees, we anticipate will have something to do with special education needs associated with issues during the pandemic. It's an unfortunate fact that we do know that we are looking at that, and we need to prepare ourselves for an increase associated with that. I mentioned the earned income tax. Well, guess what? As we collect more earned income tax, there is a cost to do so. So we have to reflect an additional thirty thousand dollars. We do have preliminary network technology increases of ninety-five thousand dollars. And again, the Finance Committee, Safety and Operations, and full school board will have the opportunity to review technology and operations budget in their totalities as we move forward in the budgetary process. There is that safety and security increase of one hundred thousand dollars. Okay, four hundreds. Well, so we have an increase for the rental, which is mainly the West Oil Tank because we only did it for one year. We thought by now, we would actually have that natural gas pipeline in over the summer of twenty-twenty-one. We decided to postpone that to twenty-twenty-two. And now with the current supply issues, we're being told that the summer of twenty-two might be an issue. In order to do that, we have to rent that big oil tank up there for another year. We have an increase for repairs and maintenance based upon the issues that we've been having. And basically Joe's request because Joe is saying, there are things that I can handle and take care of, but you've got to make sure I have dollars in my budget to be able to do that. And a good thing here is our technology lease. We have a technology lease that is being reduced by thirty-seven thousand, two eighty-two. Object five hundreds, that's where our STA contract resides. That's a three percent increase. And there is the additional tuition costs in the five-sixties associated with the charter and special education school. The VOTEC school tuition, we did receive an early look for North Monco. And that's a straight increase of sixty-one thousand, seven forty-nine, essentially driven mostly by our enrollment figures that attend there. And also there are adjustments within their own budget that they've informed us of. Six hundreds, there, there is the hit for the fossil fuels, the heating oil, diesel, gasoline, and electric. Software increase, textbooks, we've reduced a little bit associated with where we were at, what we had budgeted versus where we actually ended up the past couple of years. So we made a slight adjustment in that figure. Remember, Mrs. Smith also has at her disposal many of these different grant opportunities as well to help adjust and cover some of these costs moving forward. We added seventy-five thousand dollars for replacement equipment, mainly through the operations reviewing the needs under the seven hundreds. And Mr. Dorr mentioned that. That was a topic of conversation. And we might be able to get a lease in there. We'd be able to afford some more vehicles over the price of, cost of a couple of years. We have offsetting reduction in infrastructure technology budget of thirty-two thousand, five hundred. Object eight hundreds, again, the smaller figures are in here. Increase for travel and dues and fees are offset by TD Bank lease that we've entered into. It's in its tenth year that as we pay more principal, that drops into the nine hundreds and the eight hundreds, the interest goes down. And again, these are all driven by account codes set up by, by the state. So we're not doing anything, reimagining anything at this point in time. Okay, so tonight, when you compare the revenues and the expenditures, right now, it looks like a shortfall of six million, one forty-six. I did put this item in here, debt service reserve. We did have somewhere in the neighborhood of one point eight million dollars. Last year, we decided that we would use five hundred, we would split it into thirds. So five hundred and ninety-four thousand for the next, last year, this year, and the following year. So that's an automatic, that as fund balance use. Leaves us with six million, one forty-six as a shortfall. That drives right now an eight point one-eight percent tax increase. We're not going to be there. I just, we're not going to be anywhere near there. Remember how far away we are from a lot of these numbers hardening up and firming up to bring that number down. Recently, we've been tracking, hey, Jim, what will it take to get us to a two-point-oh? Well, with the current shortfall and the current items that we have, we will need to get to a two percent, we'll need to reduce expenditures, increase revenues, or utilize fund balances to the tune of four point six million dollars if nothing else changes. Okay? It's just a tracker for us, and the board will continue to see that, and the Finance Committee will continue to see that as well. Again, it's not unusual for us to start with such a significant shortfall. We started, for instance, last year at five point six million, and it decreased as the budget year progressed, and we got down to a one percent tax increase. We have six or seven more budget presentations. I know you're all thrilled about that. Revenue streams for earned income tax, we'll continue to look at. State revenues, once the governor's budget is proposed, we'll know those. Continued discussion on personnel, enrollments, and class sizes continue to impact those twenty-two, twenty-three budget figures moving forward. True-up costs are still available. We haven't taken them to offset some of these additional needs. Medical insurances will continue to be reviewed. Bond refunding opportunity sets us up for a positive influence overall. And then we do have the availability of fund balances and the unassigned fund balance. The COVID reserve and the Peasers reserve also assist in offsetting future rates, potential tax increases. And those will continue to develop. We'll certainly share those now that we have audited figures at the next Finance Committee. Remember, we have entered into the Act One resolution. So we are bound to get our tax increase. First goal is to get down to the three point four percent. That's not the only goal. That's the first goal. And that, that, that three point four percent, you can tell we got quite a distance to go. And then we'll have the second comprehensive budget on January third, to be honest with you. That's just part of the process. I don't expect much to change between this presentation and January third. So maybe I'll just have the interactive there, that you guys can see if anything has changed. And the governor will provide his Commonwealth budget in February. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Weaver? Okay. Thanks, Ms. Weaver. That is my section.
Beginning November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, under authorized payment of bills and the check and voucher registered submitted for December, moved to consent.
They'll be presented next week, so you don't have that info. You have to wait till next week.
So we can just skip all the six?
Just leave it on the consent, I mean, leave it off the consent agenda, yeah.
And six point oh-two?
Mm-hmm.
Leave that off consent? All right. Ms. White?
Section seven is professional development. Item seven point zero, one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven are all on consent. That ends my section. I'll take support personnel as well, just to move things along. Support personnel is section eight. Section eight point one, two, three, four, five are all on consent. That ends that section.
Thank you. The following policies are presented for first reading. I'm going to let everybody read them. Nine point oh-two. Approval to hold motion, well, it'll request approval to hold a second reading and adopt the following policies. Again, I'm going to let people read those. Nine point oh-three.
Mrs. Maris, can we move?
I'm sorry, yes. Oh, yes, move to consent. Nine point oh-three, the motion is going to be, to appoint somebody, and I guess we need to discuss that tonight. Or I don't know, I don't know how we handle this. Or do you want people to, geeper, sorry, respond to you and make the motion?
Make a motion next week.
Mm-hmm.
If anyone's interested in taking on this committee?
So I'm currently on it, and there's supposed to be one more. I was also open to not being on this board. So if there are two members that want to take it.
Anyone offhand want to take it now or just want to think about it and we'll talk about it?
Monday.
Monday night. It'll be the following. So you'll have a work, a board, and then another board. It's, it's pretty brief.
Very brief meetings.
Mm-hmm.
No, I'd love, I'd love to. Monday is the most difficult night for me out of my week. I lost it too. Just saying.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Nine point oh-four, commitment to principles of governance. Do we have, does anybody have any questions? And then we can move that to consent. Nine point oh-five, discussion and board appointments to committees for twenty-twenty-two. And I'll let you speak to that, Mr. Saylor.
Sure. So obviously, we need to put together new committee heads and positions for the board committee assignments for the upcoming year. One of the thought processes I had was to have a member of the administration be the chair for each committee. And then board members then pile on to whatever interests, interest them. But to have the lead being someone from the administration.
Okay.
So maybe that's something that we could talk about as we move into the, the business meeting next week. And if, yeah.
Administrators are already chairs of these committees, other than the two board committees, which are finance and policy. And those are chaired by the president. We just recently added board co-chairs to the committee. So they've always been chaired by administration. The, the board co-chairs was a new thing.
And then, you know, obviously, we'll need to facilitate board members to each committee. If there's something that you're, A, if you're already on a committee, you want to remain on it. Or if there's another committee that you want to jump on, like obviously, Mrs. Maris is ready to go from one committee to another, to another committee. I think the best process would be just to, you know, we can create a chain with everybody on, right? And just see which, how we want to fill out that grid and then go from there.
Yeah, I would suggest that anybody with any interest in a committee submitted to you as board president. And then, I forget if policy prevents the board president to make these appointments. So anybody, typically, anybody who had an interest would send it to you. And then you would make tentative appointments, confirm it with those, and the board would approve it next week.
Okay.
And nine point oh-six, discussion review of the twenty-twenty-one board goals.
Matt?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Dorr?
Just going to say, I would suggest, like, I'd recommend all four of the new board members attend all of the committee meetings for a little while as observers or as, as, you know, being a part of it, just to, you'll get a better idea what they're about to be able, make a more informed decision.
Ms. White?
That being said, I think if Mr. Subers could just review the Sunshine Laws with regards to participation in committee meetings with a number of board members, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it would. They would not be, they would be non-committee member observers rather than committee, being on the committees.
Yeah. I've recently been to committee meetings where I think. I've recently been to committee meetings where I think five board members were there. Yeah.
So I'm wondering at this late hour if we actually want to discuss the review of the board goals. Right?
You can defer that.
To, what, to the January work meeting or the next business meeting?
The goal. They weren't approved till February this past year, so it's up to you.
So we can defer this to the January work session?
Give the new board members the opportunity to review them.
We'll look over them, we'll share them in the memo this week.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. That ends my section.
Anyone left in the audience? Comments from the audience? Oh, you know, come on.
No, no, really, I'm going to be.
Okay. So there are no comments from the audience? Comments from board members? No comments from board members? 10.03, the notice of the video recording disclaimer. I don't actually have to read it, do I?
You can just make reference to it.
Good, it's there. And then, do I have a motion for adjournment? I have a motion by Mr. Dorr.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I need a second? Meeting's adjourned.